Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the school meeting for December 1st, 2016, to order. First order business is public comment, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. Those in the audience and those up here, please silence your mobile devices if you have them with you. And for the record, as people in the audience can see, we're being joined remotely by a member, Brian Gross. He is away on business. He's waving up there. And because Mr. Gross is away, all roll calls tonight, all votes will be roll called tonight as well. Okay, so first order business is public comment. Anyone in the audience for public comment? Anyone? Please come up, state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm in the car, 447 Waverly Road. I really want to thank the community for the One Author, One Community event. It was terrific. I had the pleasure of attending with 23 middle school girls from the city of Lawrence who were really truly engaged in. We really appreciated that, so I wanted to publicly say thank you for your role in that. And secondly, you're having a conversation about classroom space, and I just want to ask if any consideration has been given to a grade other than kindergarten for those extra classroom spaces? And my suggestion to consider would be 5th grade, because 5th grade will be moving together onto the middle school after that, whereas kindergarteners would then be separated into separate elementary schools. So, I don't know how that would work with numbers and spaces and what the needs are, but I just wanted to present that as something you could think about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? There'll be another opportunity to public comment at the end after the presentation as well.
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure. Please step to the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
Sure. Kim Dolly, 95 Hickory Hill Road. My question, if it could be addressed either tonight or the December 15th meeting, I have high school students, a senior and a sophomore. What I'm really concerned about is the teachers and the funding for the teachers at the elementary school and how that is going to impact the middle school and the high school. My experience has been that the classrooms are getting bigger, the teachers are getting -- when an experienced teacher leaves, they're being replaced with an inexperienced teacher or a less experienced teacher. And right now, there's no flexibility in the schedules because the classrooms are so tight. Every class is filled. So, if you're having an issue with the level of class that you're in, it's virtually impossible to switch out of it, either to go to a higher level class or to a lower level class. So, when I hear the -- so, I'd like to understand, in addition to how we're, you know, kind of dealing with not only the facilities but the teachers for the elementary school, how we're dealing with it at the middle and the high school level as well, because the enrollment numbers are also extremely high there. So, I just wanted to put that on the table.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Thank you, Rich. Both of you. We have no recognition tonight. The next order business is student report. Courtney and Cole, or just Cole?
How's it going?
Good, Cole. How are you?
Doing good. Well, there's not much going on at the school right now. Everyone's pretty tired from studying for finals, just waiting for the new trimester to see what classes they're in and if they have any friends, but it's pretty tired, but everyone's focused and ready and it's going pretty well. Do you guys have any questions?
You want to go to the rest of the exam?
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thanks. Have a good one.
Thanks, Cole. Thank you.
Do you want to go home and study?
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you, Cole. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as they're presented in your packet?
So, moved?
Moved by Mr. Limpert, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? None?
Nope.
Okay. Just making sure. Trying to get your attention back there. So, we'll roll call this. Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Ms. Mably?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well. Five oh on the --
I was thinking underwater.
Okay. Next order business is chairs report. Very briefly, I just want to dovetail on what Ms. McCarty said earlier. You know, in my experience being in this town, I would say that was one of the most meaningful events, inspirational events, that I've been to, and I've been around for a little while now. The One Community, One Author, the partnership between the schools and the library, I think, is at great heights. It's never been better in my experience. And Ms. Woodson, her story, her talk, I thought touched, you know, kids as young as seven, eight years old, and there were -- well, people a lot older than that there. Let's put it that way. So, I was very impressed. I want to thank the superintendent and the school librarian for really working hard to put that together. And there was obviously a lot of sponsors in the community that supported that program that paid for Ms. Woodson to come up here. And I know I'm personally grateful for that. So, I thought it was a great event. Nothing else on the chairs report. Move over to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm just going to piggyback on that. It sounds like we're in Jaclyn Woodson, you know, admiration moment here. But I also just want to talk about the fact that we brought all of the 3rd through 8th graders to the high school during the day. And it was pretty awesome to watch all these kids come from five elementaries plus our middle school. The middle school walked down, the five came on buses. And for me, as the superintendent, when you think about gathering your community, which doesn't happen very often, to do it for a national bestselling author who's going to talk about reading and writing is why we do it. And it was so exciting for me to see all these kids so excited about this woman who started her talk by saying, "You know what? I was one of the kids in elementary school who had a really hard time reading, and I didn't read well. And now I'm one of the best, most well-known authors in the country." And how great is that? You know, her book, Brown Girl Dreaming, which is probably her -- was the National Book Award winner, she told the kids she wrote 31 times, 31 revisions. How great is that for our kids to realize that it's not about getting it right the first time, it's about working really hard until you do? And I just thought her message was great. And I so appreciate the partnership that we are developing with the Stevens Memorial Library. I wanted to talk one more part about the partnership with the Stevens Memorial Library. In January, we are starting a Girls Who Code group on Monday nights, which is just a really awesome program. I can just talk about it as my own child is involved in it. For two hours, once a week, she goes and codes and then comes back and does things on the computer, and I have no idea what she is doing. Hopefully, it's all fine. But it's a really exciting partnership. The library's going to host it. Some of our parents are actually volunteering to run it. And the school department is actually purchasing, Mr. Grant, 21 Chromebooks that are going to be housed at the library, so to be able to support Girls Who Code. And the greater part of that is when the kids aren't using them on Monday nights, they're going to be there for our students to be able to check out during the day and after school. So, they will be able to log right onto their North Andover Public Schools, you know, address and go right into Google and Chrome and just do whatever they need to do. So, that'll be awesome. So, I'm just really excited about the partnership. It seems so simple once you get going, and you wonder why not more communities do it, but it's -- they don't. So, I'm psyched we're doing it.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Who can participate in?
It's 6th through 12th grade girls.
Thank you.
It's a national program that, you know, we didn't make it up.
Moving on to old business. Second reading, approval of the in-depth strategic plan. We've been at this for several months now. I'm pretty proud of the product that the superintendent and her team has put together. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns about it, or can we cut to the chase? Mr. Gross?
I'm just wondering if you want a motion.
Okay. I love a motion.
I will move to approve the strategic plan as presented.
With a motion.
With a motion.
With a motion?
Motion with a motion.
A motion with a motion? Okay.
Second by -- motion made by Mr. McDevitt to accept the strategic plan as presented in your packet, second by Mr. Limpert. Any discussion? No discussion? Fantastic. Mr. McDevitt? I -- yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Mably?
Yes.
Mr. Limpert?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Teresi votes yes as well. So, five oh vote on the strategic plan. Great job on this, you and your entire team. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
Thanks for being patient with us on this too as well. Okay. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of our residency policy. Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, so I just want to talk a little bit about this, and if there's additional questions, we're happy to answer them at the next meeting. And our town attorney Suzanne Egan's happy to come too if it's helpful, but I thought I'd start out. So, we do not currently have a residency policy. Most schools just use the state residency policy. And one of the things that I have been concerned about is that there are cases where residency is questionable, and I thought it would be best to have a policy and a process that made a lot of sense. And I think, you know, it's an important part of ensuring that our tax dollars are being spent in the way that they are supposed to be spent and that we don't have students who don't live in North Andover attending our schools. So, that is the idea here of the residency policy. So, Suzanne Egan basically looked at residency policies across the state of Massachusetts and took those residency policies and created this. So, you can see there's some important things here. One is we define residency. And one of the challenges here is it's really about a student that they dwell permanently, not temporarily, and it's the center of his or her domestic, social and civic life. So, for instance, we have students who come here to play ice hockey as part of these elite ice hockey teams, and they're here for three or four months. They rent an apartment, four or five of them in an apartment, and they go to our schools and they leave as soon as the season is over. This policy would say, you know what? That's really not a residence of North Andover. It's not someone who is here on a permanent basis. And that's been happening, and increasingly, more and more students. So, that would be one. And then verification of residency, so it's just clear about what people would have to have to verify residency upon the time that they come to and actually enter into the schools. This isn't something we're going to go and make everybody do who's already in the schools, but if there -- unless there's an issue. This would be when you come to register your kid. And you'll see that there's some evidence here that is important. First is that, you know, that you have a mortgage or a lease or a public housing, but that also that you're living there. A gas or an oil bill, your car there, some way to say that it's not you own, but you also are living. And then, it's all about determination of eligibility so that we have some ability to go through there. You'll see that the most important part is, though, that other information that the superintendent or his or her designee may deem relevant to determining whether a student actually resides. This is not about making it difficult. If a person is really living here, we have every moral and ethical obligation. So, if for some reason, you know, a challenging family situation, a student in foster care, we're not going to make this impossible. So, that's an important part, that we can deem other information important. And then, the last part of this is something where you actually have somebody sign an affidavit of residency upon enrollment, where they are saying, "I reside here." We don't actually have that yet at this current time. And one thing that's really important is actually number three there that basically says that if you are moving, that you're required to notify us. One of the challenges is somebody will live here for a period of time, move and still be attending here, and it creates a really awkward situation. And the worst part of residency, I'm just going to tell you as a principle, is it's about the kids, and the kids get caught in the middle of this. And it's such a horrible situation when a kid is coming in from somewhere else, doesn't live here, knows it, is told they can't talk about it. It's just a bad situation. So, this way at least says, "If you move, you got to let us know." That doesn't mean that the kid's going to be gone at the end of the day. That's not what we do. We would transition them thoughtfully if it was near the end of the school year, let the kid finish out the year. But it's not being done under this kind of cloak of silence. It's really being done collaboratively. So, this is -- I think it's important for North Andover to have a residency policy. This is our first go at it. Does that make sense?
This would be slotted in there in our policy?
Yes, it would be, because we don't have one.
Okay. So, it's in the framework we are in.
The other thing that we're considering, and we'll talk more about, although there will be no cost, is actually a centralized registration process, because currently, our registration process is at all the different schools. And we're -- and it just doesn't make -- I understand during more challenging times, maybe that was what had to be done, but we now, I believe, can really handle it centrally. Not kindergarten registration, because that's when it's the most. But other than that, to be able to have someone come here, go through this, make sure that everything's set, and then not have the schools policing this. Like, let us police this, because it creates a challenging dynamic between a school, a principal or the secretary, and the family, if this is how you start your relationship. I'd rather have it here, and if you're upset with anyone, have it be upset with central office, because frankly, you know, we're not relevant to the daily reality of most kids.
Thank you. Any questions right now?
So, I actually have one.
One sec. Wait, one second, Brian. I'll get to you.
So, I know in the enforcement piece, you know, it's kind of in there about, you know, whether or not there's anonymous tips and correspondence that return to that, you know. Will there be any means of just kind of -- what's the means of keeping track of that, right? I mean, so, I mean, there's comments all the time in the pickup lines of, like, "Look at that. That's another New Hampshire plate." When very well, that could be a grandparent.
Right.
You're just picking that child up, and it doesn't necessarily mean the child goes out of state. But there's always scuttlebutt that's going on on the soccer fields or baseball or wherever. And so, you know, I don't want this to necessarily become a, you know, "I'm going to report 44 people," right? But the reality is, you know, it has to be a thoughtful process that's out there.
Yeah, so I don't think we'll change our process on that, and Mr. Gilligan's in charge of that, so I'm going to just punt to him. And we'll have an answer.
Yeah, I mean, a good move.
Thank you. To the superintendent's care.
I think it's one of those things too. I mean, we, on a yearly basis, have to ask people to leave the town of North Andover. We work really closely with the North Andover Police, and as you can see, our SROs are part of this policy, you know, to do residency checks. And the other thing I'd have to say is there's awful, sometimes with scuttlebutt too. There's things we can't say. We have more homeless kids than we've had in a while registered here in North Andover. We have divorce cases, and there's multiple issues. So, as Dr. Price said, it's very sensitive on a lot of levels. Right. But at the same time, the big key is not so much what you're talking about. It's more so if there's a central registrar, it's really clear, the process and procedure. Why should a parent have to come to the high school to register one kid, the middle school to register another, and then maybe not to the Thompson School to register a third if they have them in each level? Right. This just makes it much cleaner. Absolutely. Going forward, and we'll continue to use, work with the staff. And folks do usually get that information, and it's unfortunate, but sometimes we have to ask people to leave. Sometimes we find out people are homeless and other things too, so it's -- Okay. It's an interesting --
I don't think it would change our -- just what I'm saying.
Just puts it in.
Yeah, because it hasn't been, and I think that's not fair to anyone.
Right. Okay.
Well, that was really wrong. My question was the whole verification. I mean, this is the process for kindergarten registration anyway, and I'm assuming it's for everybody who's new.
Yeah.
So, we're just writing it down. It's never --
We're writing it down. We're defining resident, which we don't have a definition of, which is actually really important. As I worked with the students on the hockey team, they were living here, right? So, that's all we say is resident.
Right. Right.
Can, for that example, can they tuition in?
They can.
So, they could pay to go to school?
They could pay to go to school here. Absolutely.
And that would be okay?
That would be okay, because they're residing here, but they're not residents.
Okay.
And that's what .5 means.
Yep.
Mr. Gross?
Yeah, so, thank you for putting this down. I agree that this is a long overview. Couple of quick questions. One, the tense. This typically, our policies start with, "The school committee believes," and our policy is therefore, et cetera, not directed to either the registrant or the person who we're wondering if they're truly a town resident. And there, we changed tense to, "However, if you are homeless," et cetera. So, you might want to clean that up.
Okay.
It's not clear when we are going to enable the authorization for enforcement. This might be a challenge, as Mr. McDevitt suggested, that, you know, rumors on the playground or on the soccer field. What is the process by which a allegation or a concern actually raises itself to the district to actually investigate, you know, for the enforcement?
Yeah.
The less common end request is that we at least reference municipal law and other policies, either through MLC or through other references, so at least we can figure out where we are relative to references.
Yep, I got the other laws. I mean, I would say, Mr. Gross, although this may not be what people out there believe, if Mr. Gilligan or I or anyone gets a concern about residency, we follow up on every single one. It's not like we ignore some.
I'd say it's pretty much at least one a week.
Yeah.
And it's time consuming. And we're just lucky to have a good relationship with the North Andover Police and the resource officer and our supervisor of attendance and the principals. And the principals really do an excellent job on those front lines, getting information, and they oftentimes know more about a family situation than not. You know, I would say that with, you know, different situations, for example, Thompson and Atkinson are both almost 50% free and reduced lunch. And with that, sometimes people just can't afford rent, they get evicted from one place, they move to another. And really, the people at the school, they're the ones who have that frontline information. And if we get a tip or we get something that comes in, and as of this year, it's about one a week that we've had.
Yes.
You know, we work very hard to confirm and work. Darno and I just worked on one this week together, and we're able to confirm it. But it took us two weeks to track it down, just the nature of people's different family situations, so.
Anything further, Mr. Gross?
The only question I appreciate is this is perceived by the person who's being validated on some or a bullying event. I just want to make clear that we need to balance that carefully.
Yep.
If it weren't people in the street, I don't have an issue. But I think the policy is broad enough, doesn't really call it guidance on people following every single -- don't be responsible in all the way into the eligibility.
Brian, a lot of that was mumbled, jumbled. I'll just say that maybe if this other concern, I mean, this is the first reading of it tonight.
Yeah.
There's plenty of time to talk to Dr. Price, Mr. Gilligan and Attorney Egan if there's further questions before the next meeting, if that's okay?
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you. Okay. Next item is first reading of payroll benefits position. Madam Superintendent or Mr. Mealy?
Assistant Superintendent Mealy.
Assistant, Mr. Mealy.
So, as you know, we try different shared services with the municipal side, and some have worked and some haven't worked as well. This is one of those that, especially with the change over to Munis as our financial software system and HR system, we thought that it might be a time to try to have a consolidated payroll position. It hasn't worked out. Our needs are more than a full-time person for both sides can accommodate. So, both the municipal side and the school side have agreed that it would be better to return to a full-time position for the school department. So, we have brought this forward for approval of reinstituting a full-time payroll coordinated position. It would cost us $29,000 for the remainder of this year. And I have the funding there. If you recall, when we talked about the addition of the Creative Behavioral Solutions replacement with four behavior technicians, we talked about the turnover savings being at $72,000. That move saving us $39,000. And we have a tuition-in student that has brought in $35,000. So, when you add all that up and take out the four positions that were previously approved, we still had a remainder available for funding other things. So, this would be $29,000, bringing our remaining kind of tuition turnover savings to about $38,000 for the rest of the year. And this would be included in the FY '18 budget proposal, along with the four behavior technician positions that were approved for the remainder of this year.
And who would this person report to, Mr. Mealy?
There was some discussion about that in the past. It's reported directly to the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. But given the changes we've made with the HR department, we thought it made sense to have them report to the HR director. And we'll have a three-person team that we think will really be a big improvement in our HR services for the district.
So, we're looking to begin this January 1st?
Correct. Well, January 3rd, but yep, start of the new year.
Okay.
Exactly.
Mr. Gross, any questions? I guess not.
The only question we have on the possibility is, should we include Cory activities?
So, Cory activities would not be this person. Cory activities is our Director of Human Resources.
Right.
Well, one of the things we have talked about is some of the benefit management that has been done in the past, has been done on the town side, and communication hasn't always been great. So, this person, we've already been starting discussions with the municipal side about transitioning some of those functions over. So, this person would be instrumental in that as well. Mm-hmm. Yep.
We are going to call it a payroll and benefits coordinator.
Exactly.
Okay. Any further questions? No. Again, it's a first reading, so we'll vote this on our next meeting on the 15th. Okay. Now, the meat of the meeting. We kept this agenda light because our next agenda item and our last agenda item is something that we've all been looking forward to for a very long time. Is that the -- so, with that, why don't Kevin Buckley and Dan Bradford, why don't you start coming up here? You know, just a few minutes ago, we adopted the strategic plan, the in-depth strategic plan. And one of the big parts of that plan, I think it's the second one on the industry plan, it talks about decreasing class size, especially at the elementary level, in order to better meet the needs of all students. Yep. No, it's a little different.
A little bit different.
So, I just want to compliment Dr. Price and again, the rest of our team for really jumping headfirst into this study. Who's this? Mr. Gilligan?
Mr. Gilligan.
Dr. Price will give you an overview, but we're joined at the table, like I said, by Dan Bradford and Kevin Buckley from KBA Architects, who have spent the last several weeks in our schools, examining our elementary schools and trying to come up with some options about how to address our elementary class size. I don't know if there's something else you want to add to that introduction, Dr. Price, but --
Yeah, no, I would just like to thank you guys for all your time that you've been spending here. And then, the other thing I would say is, the way we're going to do this is, as you will see how this rolls out, there's kind of a Part 1 of each of these options, which is kind of what we would do immediately to try to address the 16 to 18 classrooms. And then, there's a Part 2, which is kind of part of, as we've talked about a little bit, about the Facilities Master Plan 2. And the way we're going to break this down is, Dan and Kevin are going to talk about the Part 1, and then I'm going to talk about the Part 2. the part one, and then I'm going to talk about the part two. And why are we going to do that? Because the part one, they have numbers, they have plans, it's much more in-depth. The part two is much more flexible, and it's more about kind of addressing the overall issues, so we thought that would be a good way to break it down. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys, and then I'll jump in on the part two stuff.
So just, I'm going to have you folks go through the first, the first part, I guess I would say, maybe if you could give an overview of sections one through five to start with, and then open up the questions from the board, and then go through each option at that point, open up questions from the board, and we'll go like that. Is that okay?
It's okay. Dan will run through those sections. Dan Bradford to my left, I'm Kevin Buckley. I just had a one-minute introduction for those watching to know who we are and what we're about. So KBA Architects is a 63-year-old architecture firm, and we're based out of Charlestown, Massachusetts. It stands for Nightbag and Anderson. There's some other KBA architects out in the world, and that just clarifies that issue.
I thought it was Kevin Buckley.
Yeah, I'd like it to be, Dan doesn't want it to be that. So we are both partners in the firm. And more importantly, we specialize in educational buildings. We do do university work, and we do do some medical work, but 85% of our work since that founding in 1953 has been in the public school sector. So when North Andover had their master plan facility study and looked to retain an architect with experience in examining your existing schools, and how could you possibly add elementary schools into the district, we were one of those that applied for it and luckily were retained. So we're grateful for that. And it's actually been four months we've been working on this report, just to get us to this point, and these reports never really finish, you're always developing more and more information, but I think what Dan has put together primarily creates a very clear picture, which I'll turn it over to him now.
Okay. I think what we should be clear of is that the report itself isn't a feasibility study. It's not an overall review of all the components in the schools. This is specifically a study of the elementary school classrooms. So I think, and we did notice, we had to, we're architects, and we did notice some conditions, but the thrust and goal of the project itself stems from the school administration and the strategic initiative to reduce the classroom sizes. And I think that became the focus of how we went through this, and I think in sync with the town's facility master plan, this report does expose some, for discussion, for the good discussion, how it is that we can take a look at ways to reduce the class sizes across the elementary school spectrum. By way of, I think the methodology of how we came up with the report might be beneficial. Those would be sections one through five. I'll be brief, because there's a lot of information here that doesn't make for good presentation. You do have the reports, but we did start by taking a look at what we had for plans of the existing buildings. We inputted all those onto CAD so that we could take measurements and could take dimensions and do statistics on each of the spaces that are at each of the schools. We did tour each of the schools themselves, too, to take a look and verify existing conditions matching up to what it is that's actually on site. What we did for each of the schools, and what's in the report, is this aerial site plan view that does show you all of the, not just the building components, but the site components, site with each school and with each of the thought of possibly doing any kind of work on it, does come into play. So we did provide initially this Google Earth-type setting for each of the schools, took a look, ooh, that looks a little bit light, but again, putting it in, we sent it on the features that we can take a look at dimensions and quantities beyond, within the report itself. We then identified not just the classrooms, but we took a look at each of the classrooms, where they reside, and each of the floors of the schools, each color designating a different grade level from K to five. As you know, the model presently in North Andover is for K to five at each of the five schools. So that is something we did at each of the schools, this now being Franklin, the first being Atkinson, here's where it does get a little bit boring. We did take a look at, as I said, each of the schools, and I'll take us through to the next spot. So that was critical. What we took and did with that information, and we also, I should say, is take a look at the current ECC as a potential site to receive one of the options as well. Then we took a look at the actual enrollments, and this, we went a little bit beyond, we found out where the distribution of each of the grades, K through, do I have a, it's not going to show on this, is it? K through, across the top, classrooms at each of the buildings, K through five. What we cited, and this is an important note for us, I think recognition rate now is that your average class size is about, it's over 23 students per class. And what we have noted here is the actual square footage of each of those classroom spaces. This is as they presently exist, and this is, I should note that this is how they presently exist in this school year 2016-17. What we did indicate, and you'll see it here, is the square footages, and that's for each of the schools we did this. Just a side note, the average class size or the goals by MSBA, who's, if we do use them as a standard in terms of what we'd like to see for square footages in classrooms, the average class size accepted by MSBA, square footage is 950 square feet for a elementary one through five. Average class size for kindergarten is, the goal is 1,200 square feet. So I think what you'll see in each instance, in each of the schools, not only is the, you have, I shouldn't say overcrowded, not only do you have large, very large classroom counts, student counts, you're packing them into smaller than standard rooms. So I think that more or less exacerbates the issue, and I think you should be commended for citing that as an initiative that needs to be taken a look at. So what we did do across the way is looked at the average class size presently this school year in each of the five schools. Thinking ahead and looking ahead is, if there was, with any options that come to light, eventually, numbers are going to play a role. What we did do is a code review of what overarching code items or issues would come into play or could come into play, depending on what the proposed options would include. Two, typically, two large code items that would come into play would be if you put an addition on an existing building that's over 7,500 square feet, the entire building would have to be sprinkled. So two, if the proposed work, and this one, if the proposed work dollar-wise exceeds the assessed value of just the building by 30%, if the proposed work is 30% that of the assessed value, then the entire building has to be brought into compliance with MAAB, Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, which is the access code. And so those typically, it's significant to make sure we don't present baseline classroom studies without taking that into consideration. So inevitably, in placing small additions on buildings, the net result could be that a sprinkle installation throughout the entire building, as well as the entire building inevitably brought into compliance with the access board. So we then took a look for, I'm having a hard time, just to let you know what those trigger values are. For Atkinson, 30%, from the access board, for Atkinson, 30% of the assessed value of 5.9 million. Any project in excess of 1.8 million would be the trigger. For Franklin, which is assessed at 4.9 million, 1.4 or 1.5 million would be the trigger. Kittredge, just over a million would be the trigger, it's assessed at 3.47. For the Sargent, it's assessed at 10.7, so a $3.2 million project would be the trigger. And then for Thompson, it's assessed at 5.2, so a 1.5 or 1.6 million project would be the trigger from the accessibility standpoint.
Sure. That's a very important slide, and just one, maybe you could put that in a little more, a little more context, what those numbers actually mean. What, if you spend so much money...
Yes. It's, and I'll try and keep it even simpler, but it does get a little bit more complex. That value is actually any contract work proposed over a 36-month period, in other words, three years. So if you do a small project at one of the schools this year, and then another one the next year, and then a third, in a third year, if the, for instance, at Atkinson, if those three projects, or if a single project was estimated to cost $1.793 million, then the entire building has to be brought into compliance. Now, what does it mean to be brought into total compliance? To be brought into compliance means it's being retrofitted or renovated as if it were new construction, meaning the company, any space that's not accessible. It's not just getting into the building, it's every single space, so every single door in the building, it's not just the doorknobs, it's the latches, it's going to be the depth of where they sit, so you may have to make the opening wider. It's, yes, it's the bubbles, it's the toilets, it's all of those things which are recognized and you see the signs for, but there's a, it's the lighting levels, it's the height of, mounting height for any of the switches. Everything has to be provided and changed. Anything that you don't bring into compliance, you'd have to seek and get a variance for before you could assume you don't do it.
And the typical place, just to add one thing, elevators, for example, have increased in size, and so under the current Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, the size of the elevator cab itself needs to be increased. So we've had renovated projects, we've had to get into the core of the building and rip out the elevator to put in a larger elevator if a variance is not granted, and that can impact on the classrooms that may be on either side of that elevator. So a lot of that comes into play.
Just to inform people watching at home, if you want to try to follow along, there is a link to this report on the website, so feel free to hit that one.
In the backdrop, just so you can see the hardcore info as to where we got that, for instance, in Atkinson, the red box is letting you see from the assessors cards that the building value, and I can't read that one, I'm sorry, but I can go back and tell you what, thank you. And so for contents, each of the five schools was included.
I'll be loaning Dan money for glasses after this meeting.
My arm hurts, so I can't see. So there. So, so we came in working, well, I think this was that, did that mark the point? You're going to start asking questions, David?
Yeah. I know there's a lot of background material there before we get into the options.
Yep.
But Mr. McDebit, do you have any questions on the first part that we've gone over so far?
So I just want to be sure, going back, sorry, I think to the third section of the square footage recommendations that are out there. It was 950 square feet for grades one through five, is that correct?
That would be the state standard.
State recommendation, and 1,200, you said, for kindergarten?
Kindergarten, and that...
Okay. Wanted to be sure that I had that right.
And let me make one qualifier, the 1,200 square feet is the upper limit that they look for, and that includes a toilet within the classroom space itself.
Okay. Plus bathroom facilities.
Inclusive of, 1,200 includes 150-square-foot bathroom.
Okay. So in just looking at this, it looks like we have no kindergarten classroom that exceeds 1,200.
No.
We have one.
We have one.
At the Kittredge Elementary, in ground floor, sorry, the ground floor.
Correct.
Because there's no bathroom, that actually is the one kindergarten classroom.
And then for the rest that are looking for 950, I'm seeing really one at Atkinson. I don't think I'm seeing any at Franklin, unless I'm missing a number here. I'm seeing none at Kittredge, including the brand-new portables that were put in three years ago. I don't think I'm seeing any at Sargent, and, I'm sorry, at, correct, at Sargent, which is only 20 years old or so. And most of Thompson is actually above the levels.
Correct.
Which...
Yep.
And these have changed, the recommendations have changed over the years.
Correct.
Okay, just trying to level set that.
They have.
Basically, almost none of our classrooms are at the square footage level. Okay.
Yeah.
So far, I'm good.
Okay. And I would say this, too, if you were to, and I, I'm not going to say it, because I know, it suggests that we're using MSBA as the standard, but how they would look at this if this were a project with them, and you had all these existing conditions, would they make you come up to, no, that's not what they would do. But if you were to build this new, okay, if you were to build this new, however, they would look for these minimums, there's a 10% minimum variance either way that they'd accept.
I think your point earlier of the number of students that we already have in these class spaces...
That's correct.
Which are larger than we would like, are in smaller spaces than we would like and that the state would recommend.
That's the point, I think I was trying to make.
Okay.
Mr. Gross, any questions so far?
They heard minimum, and I heard guideline. Are you taking the guide, or is there a minimum?
Did you get that?
Brian, can you text me that question?
Try it one more time, will you?
Text me that question, and I will get it off my phone.
In the meantime, Mr. Limpert, I'm sure has a question he could probably ask.
No. So what I was going to ask you is...
So essentially, if we took the ratio of the current class size to 950, and then decremented the number of students in the class, that would be a way to sort of adjust for the smaller classroom size, right? So if I'm going to, I would normally have 20 students in a 950-square-foot classroom, and I only have 850 square feet, if I had 18 or 17 students, that'd be similar. Similar. It's part of it, a lot of it has to do with the educational delivery methods or what's going on. How much of a classroom space now incorporates IT that wasn't there before? So I think there's a lot of methodology on how the delivery, the educational delivery happens in a classroom. So it's not so hard-fest, but they do set that as their standard.
How long has this standard for classroom size been in effect with the MSBA, do you know? Because it does change from time to time. How many years?
It's well over, probably more than 10.
Probably this current 950 is within the last 10 years.
Okay. They're moving up on, some classrooms, they're, when you get to an upper level, lab sizes are going up, the requirements for lab sizes are going up quite a bit, because it's, again, it's more with current teaching trends.
So Mr. Gross would like to ask, are we talking about minimums or guidelines? I heard both.
What's interesting is, I'll use, it's a guideline, but it is, there is a minimum to that guideline. By that, there's a 10% variance. The target for a kindergarten classroom is 1,200. They will accept down to 1,100. And we're currently almost close to starting construction on an ECC facility, which is just pre-K and K, and we had to illustrate how we could successfully allow their programs to happen in 1,100-square-foot classroom typically. So that's the absolute min that they'll allow. So it is a guide, they hit it, and they'll let you know that there's a plus or minus 10% that they'll allow for variance in it. So 950 could be nine, 950 could be 900.
There we go.
Okay.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Gross?
We'll find out.
That's better. Why don't you just draw the questions on the side?
No, this works, I just, I don't want to be accused of looking at my cellphone during a meeting.
So maybe you could keep, I think they had his question.
Yes.
Yes. Send me any questions, Mr. Gross.
Okay. Move on to the first, the options.
Yeah, what we, again, with a lot of that background information in hand now, we felt it was time that we take a look at, again, the issue was trying to decrease the class size, and I think what became evident in looking at it is that the initial sweet spot, the pot one, that Superintendent had referred to earlier, was trying to, somewhere between 16 and 18 classroom addition to the system somehow, would allow for this first level of class size reduction. So we did take a look at what it would take in order to achieve that by presenting various options on how to do that. I think the first initial knee-jerk reaction that, we'll call that option one, was, tell you what, let's tackle it school by school. What would it take to get ourselves the reduction in class sizes? So just quickly speaking, that would imply, I think, to hit the numbers that we're looking at, that across the spectrum with each of the schools, increasing one classroom per grade, K through five. That's typically the overview of what we needed in order to accomplish that, if we were to deal with it at each of the schools. Now, there's one little twist, and here's one where we did pass a little bit of judgment on some of the existing conditions that we took a look at, and I failed to recognize it when we were clicking through the slides that indicated the square footages and where those classes all resided. There were some cells that had blue in them. Those noted portable classrooms. And by, I think, anyone's, those are becoming substandard, they've reached it, they're 25 years plus. In all honesty, that type of construction was meant for a temporary Band-Aid installation. And I think those being 25-plus years... And I think those being 25-plus years, and the two schools that we do locate those, or have located those, I think it, if we're considering doing anything, one of the first things that should happen in each of those schools, that being Atkinson and Franklin, is to remove and replace those. So, in doing this classroom count, that's another thing that comes into play when we take a look at these options, is assuming that if we had done the work on any of these schools, we'd be removing and replacing those facilities, those classrooms. So, option one, again, as I said, I think the way to take a look at this, this would maintain the model that you have here now, the K through five at each of the five schools. But what we're taking a look at is trying to see what types of additions then, or additional spaces, would be required at each of the schools. So, at Atkinson, it would result in first demolishing the, these two portables that are over 25 years old, constructing an eight-classroom addition, that would make up the six needed, plus the two just lost by the demolition. As you'll see in the estimates, that would trigger then the need to put sprinkler systems throughout the building. And then, two, the access code would be triggered to bring it into compliance as if it were new construction. So, again, by doing that, we've gained, we haven't gained that sweet number of 16 to 18 classrooms needed across the way. This would have to happen at all schools in order to get that, the work. So, again, we took a look at Franklin, oops, I'm sorry. Yep. Franklin, this, there are, at Franklin, there's actually four portables. We have two that house the first grade, two first-grade classes. Then we have a special ed space and the music room and the other portable. So, those would be, again, would get rid of the two that serve as the classrooms, needing eight classrooms, plus that sped space, plus that music room.
Jim, who's doing the, would it be helpful, I think maybe for the people at home, because I think they're having a tough time reading that.
Yeah.
Could you put up the schematic of what you're talking about, or what it would look like schematically? So, this is, this is the-
Yeah, okay, let's go back to Atkinson.
Go back to Atkinson.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
So, that's what, that's the addition you would talk about, the portables.
That's the approximate location of where the four portables are right now. So, this would be the construction of the eight, I'm sorry, of the two portables. So, this would be the construction of the eight classrooms to get us a net gain of six. Now, what I would say, and please don't, this was strictly as an order of magnitude. This wasn't considered, you know, the A-final design or anything like that. What we're looking at is simply from a, this is where it is a little bit of a feasibility review, just to make sure it can fit, that it's in sync with the building and the site as well. So, we can see that it does fit, and it can be accommodated. So, that, this is the second floor, those would be one-floor, one-story classrooms that we were proposing. Yeah, okay. Over to Franklin School, I wish the pointer doesn't hit when I hit the screen on this. So, I can't, goes up to that point, just disappears. So, I can throw, what we, well, I'll verbally give you an idea. The, at the top of that lower piece of green is where you'd see the, to the left is the sped space that we'd be looking to replace. That's currently where the existing portable is, and to the right of that is the music room. Those two we propose to be replaced. At Franklin, here's one other thing, too, in introducing, currently, the size of the gymnasium is severely undersized. And it's, the condition is not in real good shape. Yep, yep. And the gymnasium is, well, let me, the gymnasium is that, the middle square, the middle rectangle, or part of that is. And what we're proposing to do in that case is to put an appropriately-sized 5,000-square-foot gymnasium that would enable you to have the, for that many students to be able to use it. It can be divided in two, so you can have the correct amount of PE classes for that enrollment. And that's presently a problem, it's a big issue in the condition of it's, because it's undersized. It's not adequate, and it's not appropriate, I think, for an elementary school. Our way of gaining those, so, anyway, we're looking to construct the eight-classroom addition, plus the sped, plus the music classroom. And our, we, the 5,000-square-foot gymnasium would be located up top. What we're, the combination of eight that we got here was, the way to minimize it was to repurpose the existing gymnasium and turn those into classrooms. So, rather than just put additions around, what we're proposing to do to minimize what we're doing, cost-wise, it's probably gonna be about the same, so it's not really worth talking about. But what we are looking at is the repurposing the current gymnasium and use that real estate so that we just don't sprawl, and then end up with a former gymnasium with no proposed use. So, again, what this is going to do is prompt or trigger the need for the sprinkler system to be installed throughout the entire building. That's anything that's not green is gonna have to be sprinkled. Likewise, the compliance with the architectural access board is going to be triggered. Okay, Kittredge? Okay, Kittredge, again, the, what we'd be looking to do here is gain six classrooms. The, presently, the Kittredge is sprinkled, so it doesn't need to be as part of this. It would have had it not been sprinkled. And I think the gymnasium, the last addition to it is what triggered it to have to be brought into compliance at that time. So, that illustrates why, and why we have to do it. But, what didn't happen during the last one is that it wasn't brought into compliance with MAEB. So, that's something that would have to be considered as part of gaining the classrooms here. Okay? Any questions about, that was option one, which was- Sargent and Thompson, it, actually, what happened there? No, we, oh, no, physically, we do not, but as far as- With each of those, number one, Thompson, it's interesting, it's the smallest site, it's only two acres, which is, that's tucked in, tucked in there, the ability or inability to add classrooms would be very difficult. However, at Sargent, it should be said that there's, we think classrooms could be obtained by repurposing, and the utilization of some of those classrooms is low. So, the thought there would be to gain classrooms simply by, no increased footprint at either school, but rather just repurposing and take a look at the utilization factor for each.
Okay.
Okay?
That's option one.
That's option one.
Ms. Debit, any questions?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, this whole triggering of the sprinkler system, is that a concern that, should we be having those anyway, even if we weren't changing anything? It seems to me that, it seems like a danger. Or is, why is there a trigger in the first place?
Why is there a trigger? I think, no pun intended, the alarm shouldn't go off because a building isn't sprinkled. But if there's an opportunity to, or a reason to, yes, you should.
And we're saying size causes for, it's more difficult to put out a fire, so you need sprinklers?
Say that again?
Size, square footage causes that?
No, it's, it's-
Just coming up to code, modern code?
Yeah, it's, believe it or not, what we've seen in most communities right now, unfortunately, the code reads, any building over 7,500 square feet, these are so far beyond that, that's just the minimum that they use in the code.
Okay.
We've seen a lot of communities that were proposing to just simply, to get over a spike in population, they saw it. They wanted to put a portable, the rental kind, on their building. And if it touches the building, a lot of locals are requiring them to sprinkle the entire building, just for the use of leasing a portable and putting it on the building. So, you can see that the incentive from the fire department standpoint, and how are you gonna argue with that? It's crazy not to. If you have an opportunity and you certainly have a reason to, do it.
And the building code has evolved over time, so what they do, and you've probably heard the term grandfather clause.
Sure.
So, they have to look at those items in which they can keep buildings functional, they'll allow you to put money into the proper areas that you may need it, you know, direly so. And then, when you get to the point where you add to the building or increase its size, they'll say, no longer are we gonna allow this to be grandfathered, now we're requiring it to be sprinkled. And so, the building has a fire alarm system for evacuation of the building. And then, the sprinklers protect your asset and protect the firefighters going into that building once that fire has started.
The code has taken a couple of different turns. At one point, they actually had a percentage, it used to be at 33%. So, oftentimes, it would have been X, if you then got to 30 and you had to comply with MAEB, that typically puts you over 33. And then, there was one where it was, one evolution where each time, it's gotten more and more stringent. So, you can see where that's going. But at one point, too, I think they had it that if you were doing the type of work that made it easy for you to install, meaning if you're gonna tear down all the ceilings and everything, that's the time, just do it then.
Okay.
But if you weren't doing any of that, they kind of allowed it. And if you came between the building and the fire department, who is the one that said you had to do it?
You had, whether or not you had to.
Can I just, this is always something that creates anxiety.
Right, that's why I wanted to bring it up. Reiterate something that Kevin just said. The alarms protect the kids getting out of the building.
Yep.
The sprinklers protect the firefighters going in and the asset. So, this is not a situation, yes, when we touch and work on these buildings, we should sprinkle them.
Correct.
And that's about asset protection and about our firefighters.
Right.
So, I just want to be clear on that, because when people hear this, they, so I just, thank you.
And typically, what happens is, the sprinkler itself has what's called a fusible link on it. So, the fire that's generated under a sprinkler head melts that fusible link, and that single sprinkler opens up. I always laugh at the TV shows in which the crook wants to rob the building, so he puts a flame under one sprinkler, and the entire system in the building goes off. Well, they don't want that to happen, because that also damages buildings that are not under fire. It also puts the firefighters at risk, because now they're coming into flooded areas that they don't need to have those kind of issues in.
At the start, you said that, I'm gonna make sure I got this right, that if you recommend tackling each of the schools, look at one room per grade as needed. Are these just the schools here, not Sargent, not Thompson, because there are other ways you'd find space for them, you were saying?
Correct.
Well, you wouldn't find others, right?
Thompson, no.
I think there's one classroom at Thompson, and then you said there's shuffling could be happening at Sargent, but-
Correct.
Is that right?
And this, I mean, we're getting into this, this would require-
Would require us to move some kids.
So, I think-
No. Do you want to answer a question?
I think just to mention that in accomplishing option one, just some backdrop characteristics, because we'll carry over on that, this topic later on at the very end, when we look at a matrix. In order to accomplish it, we just heard of work going on at all schools.
Right.
That ain't gonna happen in one whack, in one year. So, the project obviously has to be phased. So, there, that's a characteristic of this option that comes into play when we take a look at, trying to objectively take a look at the different options and evaluate them. So, I just want to highlight that a little bit, okay?
So, I mean, obviously, just kind of looking at this, I mean, we're looking at potentially adding classrooms on to three very old schools, the youngest of which is 53 years old. And so, I think there's a lot of things that kind of need to happen in those buildings as well. So, I'm just curious, when we start looking at this, I mean, are we also talking, you know, that bathrooms are gonna have to be redone in all of these schools? Or just, I'm guessing so, because of the compliance that needs to take place?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, I know we like to think that, you know, like, we're gonna keep our class size, you know, at a smaller level, but I hate to say it, if we build it, they will come. And I'm looking at all three of these schools, and, you know, one of the things that's there is the cafeterias are already bursting. And I'm not sure, from a logistics perspective, how, you know, six or, you know, whatever that number is in each of the schools, I think it's six in each in option one. All of them are somewhat confusing in my head right now, but I think it's six in each of these to add those level of students in there. I mean, we already have kids eating lunch at 10:30 in the morning.
Right, I think the way to look at it at this point, I know where you're gonna follow up with me, but this, this isn't proposed that we put six classrooms on each school so that we can get that many more kids into the building. It's more or less displacing or spreading out those students that you have. So, from a population increase, that's, that's not part of option one. That's more or less just saying, the whole intent and the trigger for this whole project was to, what other devices and what ways can the class size be reduced? So, even though we're putting more classrooms on, now you're gonna say, if you build it, they will come.
Right.
That we don't have control over, and it'd be tough to forecast that, but that phenomenon happens everywhere. You're absolutely right. You build a new facility or something to that extent, it's never decreasing, never decrease. So, you probably would.
Okay, all right, that's a for option one for right now.
Oh, you have, Mr. Gross's, we have your questions, Brian.
All right, number one. Can you please comment on any differences in the cost because of the HVAC system? Do you, have you looked at the HVAC system at all?
No, and again, this wasn't a facilities audit that was performed as part of this, a total facilities audit. This was more or less looking at a classroom count and study. We observed some things that were piggybacked and overlapped, i.e., the need to put a new gymnasium on at Franklin, demolish and remove and replace the portables, those things. We couldn't suggest that we still inhabit those and hit the counts. So, beyond that, we didn't, with the exception, you'll see it with the next option, where we were increasing the population to a school, where we did have to consider what is the impact on the core facilities, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, the kitchen. That was taken into account, and you'll see that, it's a little in front of what we're looking at.
Number two, please comment on any impact on available parking and traffic patterns as a result of this proposal. Do you want to do that, or you want me to? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it needs to-
I can answer, too, if he wants.
Yeah, the, again, it's, on the option one, if you're saying, if we're looking at it as a complete project, again, there's no increase to the number of students who are, on paper, there's no increase to the number of students coming, number of buses, number of cars theoretically isn't gonna change. So, aside from the-
Unless we move some students from Thompson or Sargent.
Correct, correct.
Try, text me that, Brian, okay. So, but, but I do think it's fair to say that all of these proposals, and when we look at the cost estimates, you'll see that there's site work funding in there, and that it would be part of the traffic patterns and the parking. We realize we're gonna have to do site work on any of these.
Yes.
And you almost have to, because no matter which building you add- Put an addition on, there'll be construction vehicles there, it will impact on some of the existing circulation, the paving, the parking areas, and that'll have to be repaired as well.
And his question was, it's related to footprint. So, some of these have a larger space, like Kittredge, for instance, is a tight footprint, Franklin, a less of a footprint, and that would have to be taken into account. But we haven't done that work yet.
No, no, but, yeah, I think that's another layer that comes into play. But we did acknowledge as a placeholder, there would be the need for site work, and that translates to a dollar value that we held.
And then, Brian's next question is, can we, do we demo the portables now? Can we plan to add new and demo the portables later? I think our feeling is that we would demo the portables when we renovate or add to the building. You want to do that simultaneously. So, given that this is a phased process, we wouldn't demo the portables all at once. We would demo the portables when that building was being phased in.
Mm-hmm, right.
And then, the last, are your proposals enabling a vertical building later if the town needs to build up?
That, as you'll see, we hadn't considered that. I think we're trying to work with the real estate you currently had, and currently have, and options, well, you'll see in the next two options, we hadn't planned on going up in any of these options. It was just to evaluate it more so from a pricing standpoint, an overall cost based on, we had to come up with a square footage of what each of these options would yield, and let that translate to a gross square foot number, to see realistically, within budget reasons, is this something that could be done?
And another thing to add to that, so, when an existing building, it's almost impossible to build a second floor on a first-floor structure, if that's what that's implying. if that's what that's implying, and then if you talk about building a one-story structure to house current classrooms now, but with the intention that in the future, it could have a second story added to it, that adds cost to a first level for foundation and walls, et cetera, to support that second floor, that may never happen. So in both cases, they're very costly options that very rarely are realized.
They are, and that, that's one of the, it didn't come into play, but that's one of the concerns from the code standpoint as well. Things that weren't in, none of these buildings comply with the seismic code. So to go up a second floor, that's something that would have to have been taken into account. We wouldn't be able to just simply layer another floor on top of those existing.
Last question. When do we, did we do the sprinklers at Kittredge, this might be Mr. Mealy, and does that impact the timing of M A A B compliance? So if we.
Well, sprinklers, when they were done, five, five, five or six years ago now, the gym would probably factor in.
Okay.
Yep. As far as the, I think he's referring to the M A A B compliance. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
So, any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
All right, option two. Go, go down.
Okay. Option two, option two, what we took a look at here was.
Dave, you want to put this, the picture up?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah. Option two, as you can see, we, we took a look at, is there a possibility that any of the existing five schools might be able to accept a consolidated kindergarten, a sixteen-classroom kindergarten facility or addition? And the idea behind that being, if we could put, that's the, the sixteen classrooms would alleviate, they'd vacate the, the other elementary schools. This would be, in any instance, we consider a consolidated kindergarten space. Those classrooms vacated from the other schools are suddenly available for elementary school, one through five use as classrooms. So, we took a look at a way of freeing up and creating additional space at other schools by taking a look at putting a sixteen-classroom kindergarten to handle the entire population, plus the reduced class size for the kindergarten. It goes from fifteen to sixteen, there's currently the fifteen, but in order to reduce the class size, we'd have to put a sixteen-classroom kindergarten. So, the, the larger L-shaped space is the proposed kindergarten space, as well as, off to the left is that replacement sped space and the music room. The slither off to the left, here's where we did have to take a look, we're increasing now. We're bringing quite a few students into the, you know, two hundred, three hundred students into a facility that's not meant for it. We would have to expand the cafeteria and the kitchen, we would have to, that gymnasium comes into play, it definitely has to be increased. And then two, we need to construct four general classrooms in order to accommodate the, the increase for the, increased need for the elementary. Oh, yeah, you always tell me to do that. Yeah, that does. Okay, so the, the four classrooms that we're talking about, again, would be to repurpose portions of the gymnasium to be, the existing gymnasium to be the, a couple of the classrooms, then putting two other classroom additions on at the, the south side of the building, adjacent to the, the proposed gymnasium space. Okay. So, the, the would-be part two work, I guess, that would, I, I, that was the comparison I was trying to make, to get to that sixteen to eighteen classroom needed, to reach the goal of being able to reduce class sizes across the, what we were looking at, as I said, in order for that to be reached in option one, all the schools had to be addressed or touched over many years. In this case, this could be done, as soon as the sixteen-classroom addition is placed on Franklin, the other schools will see relief, so the part two work is, is work that goes on beyond that, and I think the superintendent's going to address that when we get to the, the.
We're going to quickly touch on.
Sure, you can do it really quickly.
Part, let's do part two, option two, part two.
Option two, part two. So, you know, again, I think it's really clear that this option would free up space within Sargent and within Thompson that would allow us to increase one per grade, so that, that, we would not do anything more to Thompson and Sargent, because we would free up the space, because it'd be four, four kindergartens. At Sargent, we have one additional class, that gives us five, because now you're one through five, you only need five. And at Thompson, we actually have bubbles, so there are, it would take us, we have, we would, we would have sixteen classrooms for five grades, so you could have three per grade, so it would work. So, the two schools that would need to go back and be taken care of are Atkinson and Kittredge, where we would need to add additional classroom space. For Atkinson, we would need to construct a four-classroom addition, which minus two portables, gets you to two additional classrooms, which allows you to have one more per grade. And then at Kittredge, you would construct, construct a three-classroom addition there, and again, trying to get to one per grade. I will say that it's really important to understand in the, in the part two aspects of this, these are our ideas. These, if we go with this, this would be part of working very closely with the town manager on facilities master plan two. We might make a different decision as we get down the road. So as you will see, when we get into part two of some of these, we go above the eighteen classrooms, which is what we currently need to get to the state average of class size. If our, the projections increase, if the building that we're doing in town brings more students in, we would probably move towards building more classrooms. If that does not happen, there's a lot of work that could be done at these schools, let me give you an example. Atkinson currently has a subpar library, music, and art space, and it needs to be addressed, and this money could be used to do that. So, we're not committing, but we are saying that there's possibilities that we could add more classroom space and/or reallocate those funds to do what's needed in terms of programmatic space. So, that's why we purposely didn't do drawings for part two, because we want to just say, this is what we think might happen, but we don't want to get to a place where we're committing to something four, three, four, five, six years out, when the reality of the town changes, and we need to address it. But it does do what I think the town did so well, which was kind of put projects in a line to address, and then come back and address those when it's there and at time, and who, you know, the school and the school committee and superintendent can then make decisions about what makes sense. Does that? Okay.
Questions about option two? Any questions?
Quick thing, can you just go back to the one that shows the neighborhood around it?
Oops.
So, that new gymnasium at the top, does that stay relatively within, how close are you against the backyard of the people next door? Because that looks pretty darn close.
It's, actually, I wish this was.
I know, it's.
But the, you're seeing a drive that wraps around, that currently wraps around.
Okay.
It's almost within that area, there's.
You're not really pressing up too close again, you're not changing that, that driveway's existing, is what you're saying.
It's in that spot, the pavement that you're seeing with all the parking spaces.
Yes.
That exists exactly where.
Right, that's how it is now, okay.
So, we're not, there's no further approachment on that.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, we'd have to take a, a look at the playfields and the playgrounds that are being compromised here that would have to be replaced and replicated elsewhere.
Right.
But, yeah, for the, we wanted to make sure that we could, the fire department, big concern is making sure that we do have a consistent drive, continuous drive.
Yes, and that's a very much a residential entrance and a residential exit, you're going by people's front yards.
Yep.
On a higher level, right. In the, right, okay, and then one other question is, so you've now got eighteen, is it, kindergarten classrooms?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. And they're going to have gym on a Monday or whatever, how are you going to, how would we accommodate gym for all those kids? In that new gym, even though it's a new gym? Like, how many hours in a day, is that physically possible, or do they need their own gym? Not that I think that's a good idea, but.
That's a long walk.
I did notice that, too, you need ten minutes to get to gym, I thought of that, you know? So just wondering how you would actually do that.
It's, that gym is going to be subdivided, and that's the only way you're going to be able to meet, being able to.
Have double classes.
You can definitely have to have double classes.
It's called multiple teaching stations within that space.
Okay.
If this were exclusively for a kindergarten age group, scale-wise, it doesn't have to be a gym.
Right.
You don't need the regulation-sized basketball courts or rim heights or anything like that.
Right.
And it's typically called, even in elementary schools, up until recently, it was called just playrooms.
Right.
And that, I, I think half of that gym would, would feel that way horizontally, vertically, it's going to be a full height, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there an M S B A requirement for the size of the?
They, they like to see it start at five thousand square feet. That's, that's how that number, yeah.
The gymnasium, yes, no, not the playroom.
No, oh, I'm sorry, no, not the playroom. But that's, that's in order to subdivide it and make two spaces out of it, because the realization is, a lot of schools do have to have double concurrent gym.
Remember, does that get bigger in this plan? It does, right? Yeah, okay.
That's the cafeteria, kitchen.
That's right, okay.
And this isn't, and this isn't to say that it answers every question, we've tried to answer as many questions as we can right now at this level. It could be possible that in, as this evolved into a deeper set of construction documents or planning, maybe the old gym, because it's substandard and too small for the elementary school, maybe that became the playroom for the kindergarten, but then you'd have to accommodate those two classrooms that were absorbed into that old space.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Come on, I mean, just in terms of some logistics of a day at the school, that really alarmed me with this, to be perfectly honest. I mean, we're looking at adding, you know, if we have sixteen classrooms at twenty kids, or twenty students.
Eighteen.
Eighteen to twenty.
Nineteen point six.
Nineteen point six, okay. So, let's just, let's just call it three hundred students, we're adding three hundred students into a school that's already at five hundred. So we'd have an eight hundred student school. More than that, eight eighty, almost nine hundred, it's sixty years old by the time we would probably build and open any of this construction that's out there. I'm seeing a very small library that we now would have to be utilized by almost nine hundred students. You know, a gym that is going to, you know, you're going to have gym once every other week, if you actually have to have a classroom that gets assigned out there. And I think, you know, one of the very common things that we're talking about is, you know, all of the kindergarten students would be here, and I am just envisioning the buses. And if there's one thing that we get a tremendous amount of emails about, and maybe it's me, I don't know if I'm the butt. I know, I forward them to you. Is how long is my seventh grader, my ninth grader on the bus? I cannot imagine being on the committee and hearing how long is my fifth and sixth, five and six-year-old child sitting on a bus to get from Hay Meadow, for example, all the way to the Franklin on a daily basis. So, this, while I appreciate this, this is alarming to me. Okay?
Yep. I, I'm, go ahead.
Mr. Gross has a question. How many, if, if we build a mega school, what non-teaching positions do we need to be aware of? I'll answer that. You know, I, I think realistically, for instance, we have a half-time assistant principal that would have to become a full-time assistant principal, that's just not, would have to happen. But then also, is one nurse enough? Probably not, we'd have to go to two. It's that kind of stuff, I, I would say we haven't done that level of analysis. I, I think what we've done at this point is, once we make a decision on what option, is then we get the analysis. But there's no doubt that this school would need additional administrative and support staff to have a school of this size. There's no question about that. How many buses would be needed to address this mega school? Again, traffic impact, just what you said. And, Mr. Mealy, we've talked about the buses, the good, I'm going to allow you to answer that, because you have an eloquent answer to the buses and transportation.
I will say that we have, we started looking at the type of models we would have to do, and, and right now, you know, there are a lot of variables, so it's going to depend on start time. If, if you had a separate start time for the kindergarten aspect of this project, then it's not that far from most of our other schools, that you could probably utilize the current routes we have and drop off the one through five, and then just continue on to the kindergarten, that's one possibility. So we don't right now anticipate a big impact on transportation costs, but it all depends on where we end up, on which option we choose, and then we'd have to run our models and determine that.
And then he also was asking about the room for the busing. I think the reality is, when you looked at the schools, Franklin was really the only physical space that we felt had enough of a footprint to be able to do this. So, you know, again, we asked these guys to come back with as many options as possible for us. Franklin was the option in terms of, just, it, it may not be a great option.
No.
It's one of our largest schools to begin with, but it was the only space that we felt we could put this many additional classrooms. We could not put this many additional classrooms in.
Let me.
We could not put this many additional classrooms in Atkinson or Thompson, and putting the kindergarten at Sargent would be quite a challenge in terms of busing, et cetera.
Yes. I, I'm not, I won't take any of the critique and criticism of this unpersonally, but it was that charge more than anything else. This is a twelve-acre site, the others are, and.
Too small.
There's other, the configuration isn't so bad, it's an enlarged rectangle. It's not, you know, it doesn't have these appendages that just make a bunch of unusable space, so we gave it a, a try. And I think, to at least let it run through the, the works, that's, that's why again, so, not looking, I, you know, I, I think when we get to the end, you'll, you'll take a look at the matrix, and we try to look at it as objectively as possible, and we'll, we'll see where things go. Okay?
No questions? Option three?
Okay, option three. Did it first this time. Okay, option three is actually taking a look at the possibility of taking that same kindergarten sixteen classroom and putting it over to the, adding it on to the E C C, to take a look at what the, make it a pre-K K facility, and to see what the impact would be on it. What we had to do is not simply as it was at the, when we took a look at Franklin, albeit not ideal, at least there are program requirements that we have to maintain, and we have to provide as part of this option to a kindergarten facility. It's not just classrooms, in other words. We do have some core spaces, the gymnasium and the cafeteria, the dining at the Franklin School that would be incorporated and used as part of that program, so that too had to come with this option. So we took a look at the, the possibility of putting the, again, the sixteen classrooms, and then tried to, in the lower right-hand corner, it's not going to show, yeah, look at the possibility of, again, to increase utilization, have a shared space between a cafeteria and a playroom. And then two, have a combined music-art room. And the adjacencies of those are significant, in that we could have a drawn partition between the two, so that it could be opened up as a more flexible assembly-type space. That's nowhere in the present E C C or in the kindergarten, but it gives a chance for some afternoon, after-hours assembly in a larger space. So, we are talking about putting a, a small kitchen in there, not as a, a full operating kitchen, but rather a satellite kitchen as part of the dining room. We call it dining, again, this would be age-appropriate, it gives us a chance to scale it down, and to make it so that it's not the five thousand square foot, but rather twenty-five hundred square foot for the playroom. And that would be adequate. Okay?
We also brought boys' and girls' toilets into that area as well, so that that core area for after-hours use has, could also function, because it, it would bring those into that main, the space of the new building.
And if these, and I should say these, as well as any of the other proposed options that we took a look at, we were looking at nine hundred fifty square foot elementary school, elementary classrooms, and these are all eleven hundred square feet, the, the, these would have toilets in each of the classrooms, much like our, in the E C C presently. So we've just incorporated that eleven hundred square feet as a, so, again, to give us an order of magnitude of what the square footage would be.
Would have toilets in each?
Yes, yes.
Just a, just a single toilet, one single handicap toilet.
Yeah.
And that really programmatically, from a kindergarten perspective, cuts down on the back and forth to the bathroom, and increases teaching time, which is important.
It's very important. Yeah.
So that, that's part one of option.
Part one of option.
Option three.
And then part two, again.
What this shows is, like, the front door of the E C C is where the, the green part starts, right?
Correct.
So this is in front of the E C C, if you will, toward the middle school.
Correct.
Well, the green space.
Right.
Well, that picture, is there any possibility to put in some back at the ECC?
We've, uh, again, um, we, we, I think if this were developed or, or if we were to take a look at, we definitely would take a look at various options and citing and things like this. Again, this was, um, let's take the, the first approach of, of, um, gaining, how big does this need to be in order to accommodate the program? And then if it could fit elsewhere, there is some wetland areas out immediately to the back. Uh, the, the, um, the building falls, the existing ECC falls right at the hundred-foot setback. Does, does that become an issue if we were to project in? Um, but again, that's, it, it just for, for, that's the, um, Atkinson School, just for, and there's a gymnasium off to the right, that, that bridge connects to the, or that link takes us to the back of the, uh, gymnasium. Could it be tucked in the middle of there? That's something we definitely take a look at. But again, for the sake of this report, for the sake of order of magnitude, um, that really wasn't the, the big throw of what we're trying to do yet. But, yeah.
With the, with building, uh, connected part of the ECC of this size, uh, what does this do for M A A B and the existing ECC? What's the impact on that?
The existing ECC is compliant and it's okay. So, uh, that, that's the good news to this. Yeah.
Okay.
Part two is then going back to touch the three elementaries that we would need to, again, with the kindergarten leaving. Thompson would be able to get an additional grade. Sargent would be two. So then you would be going back to Atkinson, demolishing, bringing in four additional classrooms, very similar to option two, but you're doing Franklin also. Um, and I think it's important to understand that in this too, we are putting a new gym on Franklin, um, because we're then using those spaces. A, a new gym on Franklin just needs to get done, and so we need to put it in there. Um, but I think that's important. Um, and then the same with Kittredge, conducting, uh, constructing three additional classroom spaces at Kittredge.
Right, and part two does trigger those code-compliant sprinklers in all those buildings as well as handicapped accessibility?
Uh, it does, uh, Kittredge is a little bit, we'll get into that.
Right.
But the other two, yes.
Yes.
Conceptually, then, if I looked at option one for Franklin and Kittredge and Atkinson, the, probably the phase two would look something like that.
Correct. So, again, that's a, that's a great question. So when you look at part, if you look at option one, you would see that part two would look conceptually like that. We just didn't wanna lock into it. Again, we're talking multiple years out.
But I mean, if the, if people are trying to understand what
Visualizing.
Yep.
Option, part two would look like, it would look something like that. You know, maybe smaller, maybe.
If we, if we chose to take the classroom decision over the programmatic decision based on school enrollments at the time.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions on option three?
Not mandatory.
I have one for Mr. Gross.
We can go, we can go to Mr. Gross first.
You can go with Mr. Gross.
Does, does the Kappa Gymatorium option limit us from using this as a one-through-five facility in the future?
This, this building?
Yeah, there was probably.
Yes.
The size, yeah, it does.
It would.
You'd have to consider putting, there's a lot of core spaces that are, are needed for a elementary school that you wouldn't need in an, uh, in a kindergarten facility, that you would have to incorporate into a, um.
And I would say one possibility is, given the proximity to Atkinson, there might be some ability to do something shared.
But it still would be very tricky.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, from a, if this were the, the scheme, I, I think it'd be, uh, something to take a look at. Is there a possibility of expanding the gym, uh, at Atkinson to, to accommodate the program here? The, the nice part about this, uh, and just in its from a location standpoint, um, the, placing it where it is is more or less a, a neutral area that you'd enter, and you can either go into the ECC or you could go into, or you go into the pre-K or, or into the kindergarten. But there are facilities within the kindergarten that will be shared, uh, on the pre-K that will be shared by the OTPT.
Main office, nurse's office.
Nurse's suite. So those aren't spaces that are, uh, needed in this addition. So there's, uh, some mutual benefits to, to being able to at least share some of the facilities that presently exist.
Any questions from overseas?
No other questions from overseas.
Is maybe any questions?
Um, I'm okay for now.
Okay.
I just, I think my question is really, um, it, it's not necessarily for this today, but it, I, I'm again concerned about busing and traffic on one thirty-three.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I just wanted to ask a question from, this previous question, is this is really, you have one?
Yep.
Additional support staff when we are more than doubling the size of the ECC?
Yeah, we thought about that. Um, so currently we have a director of the ECC. Um, we would make that a principalship. So there would be some additional cost, but we're not talking about a huge additional cost. Um, and then, you know, our nurse at the ECC, we believe, could handle it. I mean, it's a small facility. We're not going up to a mega school, right? Um, but we'd have to work on that, especially with some of the medical conditions at the ECC. So we'd have to be really thoughtful about that. Um, and we have a main office secretary. Main office secretaries in many of our buildings are handling the numbers here. So I don't see this as, um, as big as an issue that it is as Franklin.
And this enrollment here would be about?
It's about a hundred, a hundred and twenty currently, right? Is that what it is, Jim?
The pre-school.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking about the size of Franklin or Sargent, which, which we have one.
Yes, yes.
You're adding about three hundred students.
Three, yeah, so, so, you, well, four, it'd be more, a little bit bigger.
Yeah, but.
But we're not talking about the mega Franklin.
Yes, right, where you'd need multiple things.
Right. And we'd have to be really thoughtful about that. I mean, the ECC, as you all know, has some challenging situations. Like, I'm thinking medically, we'd have to be thoughtful. Um, but in terms of the scale, I don't see the non-instructional staff being as expensive as the choice of Franklin.
Yes, yes.
The additional non-instructional staff.
Okay, great.
I would say, uh, when I lead into this, the, the next section is some of the, the estimates that we came up with. But before going there, one, uh, and you'll see it, we, we do have an option three A that, that's, uh, we, we wanted to consider while I have this up on the screen. It's exactly the same, exactly the same footprint. Uh, the, the idea was presently, I, I, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but the, uh, the, the present ECC is of modular construction. Uh, and we suggest, rather than stick-frame it, why don't we consider option A, I, I'm sorry, option, uh, three A, be, uh, done with modular construction. So when we go through the, uh, the, the various options, uh, from an estimating standpoint, you'll see what impact that does or doesn't have.
Could, could Dana Kevin talk a little bit more about what modular means and what more, what it doesn't mean? 'Cause I think people got a little, we, we have some portables that leave a bad taste in people's mouth.
It doesn't mean portable.
Okay.
There wasn't.
I know the answer to this question, I just teed them up for you.
No, 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 no. There was a time it did, and, and it's, it's unfortunate. But, uh, there was a time, uh, when, um, they were interchangeable. They're not. Um, the, the portable construction is what we do have as an aged, um, temporary space i- is, is what it was. It was a fix. It's used for swing space. Um, and if you have to get over a hump, it's a good, quick way of putting in a, a classroom or two into a system. Uh, not meant for long range, not meant for permanent construction. Uh, that's portable construction. Those were the, the targets that we found at, uh, Atkinson with the two, and the three, uh, the, the, the four over to, um, Franklin.
One, one of the key distinctions are, portables used to be all that was available, and they literally come in on a trailer. And the portables that you have at your other schools most likely have the axles and the tires still underneath, behind the wainscot that's put on, or the, the little skirt. Uh, they're still there, because the idea is they come in for three, four, or five years, then you jack them back up and take them away.
Three, four, twenty-five.
Three, yeah, no, really.
Two, ten, two, twenty, whatever it takes.
You know, uh, they're set up as a leased product. Uh, initially and after three years, you've spent enough to own them, so that's what happened. You tend to own them after, and it's tough to get rid of them once they're there. So, um, versus modular, which, um, I think in response to some lower, um, costs for construction, uh, plus timing, um, you have quality control of, 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 of units that are assembled in the factory, so to speak. But a lot of the, uh, pre-wiring, pre-plumbing and all is in place, and they're delivered to the site, as you, you witnessed, I, I think, with the pre-K. That's what we're referring to as far as modular goes. It's meant for permanence or, or longevity.
What is the difference between modular and prefabricated, if anything? Is it the same?
Yeah, it's probably, uh, a, a very similar usage of terms. And I'll bet there's a lot of residents in the community that don't know that the existing building is of modular construction, because you, you, you just can't tell.
Yeah.
There, there are high-rise, um, very ritzy condominiums in New York that are all modular construction. Uh, you know, million dollar a unit, um, because it's, it's modular. It's, it's, it's certainly not portable, uh, like the old man, old days.
We're gonna build a million dollar house in the modular, yeah.
Yeah.
So, very quickly, I mean, the, the portables that we have, you know, we talk about their life expectancy and that they're beyond it at twenty-five years. For the modulars, what are we talking about for life expectancy? I mean, is that fifty years? Is that?
It, it could be. And I think, uh, the, the difference between, uh, portables and modulars from the, an attitude of ownership would be that you're going to be more inclined to maintain as you would a regular building, a modular. Um, when you have a temporary type of a housing as a portable, it, it's more or less, um, you know, the, the maintenance doesn't go into it because it's not meant for longevity. Those systems do break down. Um, and then I, I think what's compromised the most is the environment. You gotta be very careful with that.
The, the key to modular construction versus what we refer to as stick-built, so stick-built is onsite, stick-by-sticks, you know, steel stud by steel stud. Typically, because it is fabricated in a factory, not worried about weather conditions, it's brought to the site. Again, it's brought on trailers, but those trailers go away once the modules are put in place. So it's expected to last. I mean, it's quality construction, and the savings is in the fact that it's mass-produced in enclosed conditions, and that's where you get the savings from the stick-built unit onsite through all types of weather with subcontractors, yeah.
One more question from overseas.
Yeah, is there a difference in the cost of operations and maintenance between modular and stick-built?
No. And I think that's, that's what I was referring to.
And we haven't found out with the ECC. The one thing I would say to anyone here listening, if you wanna know what modular building is, go look at our ECC. I mean, we've been very happy with that product.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, next section, cost estimates.
Okay. Um, oh.
The, the, oh. I got one of these.
Not a chance I'll get some.
The tones mean something, they're significant. Um, what you're seeing, uh, with the salmon color, I'll call it salmon. The salmon color, uh, would be what we've been referring to as the efforts for part one, okay? And that more or less is what, uh, what efforts need to take place in order to achieve that sixteen to eighteen classroom gain to the system. So anytime you're seeing horizontally, um, the, the, the salmon colors, um, that implies what, what would be considered part one, okay? So, option one, as we had said, uh.
Why don't you just kind of like read off the totals?
Okay.
'Cause I, there's no, anyone can see this.
Gotcha.
In fact, I don't have a tough time seeing my book.
Okay, okay. Uh, option one, uh, the, the total to do the work, um, is about eighteen point two million dollars. That would be both part one, and in this case, that's the entire project, 'cause we'd have to do, uh, the work on all the schools.
But it's phased over many years.
And that, that would be phased over years. That's not, uh, uh, something that would be, uh, accomplished in any one, uh, one summer, that's for sure. Okay? Option two, and, and just for referencing, I'm, I'm sure you remembered, but that implied dealing with school by school, just getting the increased classrooms added to each of the schools. Option two was putting the, the consolidated sixteen-classroom kindergarten onto Franklin and working through the other, uh, core upgrades at, uh, Franklin. Uh, part one, uh, would be about sixteen point three million dollars. And the overall cost after going back for parts two, uh, part two at Atkinson and Kittredge would be about twenty-two point seven million dollars.
And I, and I just wanna note, you see the about sign for phase, for part two. It's pretty important to understand that because we're talking years out, we, we can only guess.
Correct. Uh, again, it's just for comparison's sake, for order of magnitude, I think, more than anything else, and it gives a good way to, to really take a look at it and evaluate. Uh, option three was to put the sixteen-classroom kindergarten facility onto the ECC as a stick-frame construction. Um, it'd be about ten point one seven million to get the sixteen-classroom, um, um, addition and alleviate and, and reduce some of the classroom sizes across the, uh, all of the, the elementary schools. Uh, and then going back for part twos, uh, part two work at, uh, Atkinson, Franklin, and Kittredge, the total price would be about twenty-two million, twenty-one ninety, okay? Option three, the same solution, I'm sorry, three A, the same solution as three, meaning footprint and, and all, but it's just to, to, to look at modular construction, uh, at the ECC. Uh, part one would be about six point one million dollars. Uh, and then it should be noted that, uh, we were suggesting, because of the size, uh, or the small size of what we're looking at in the regular shape we had at Kittredge, it may make sense to consider modular construction there as well, in which case, uh, the, the overall cost for the three A would be about sixteen point five million dollars. Okay?
Okay.
I think what's, what's sound then is to take a look, uh, at the estimate tabs down at the, down at the bottom that nobody can see and read. But nonetheless, uh, this, this does, uh, give you a synopsis of, of what the part one and then the overall costs would be. Um, and, and don't, uh, I, I think it's important to note, part two doesn't imply phase two. Part two implies all the work after part one. Uh, and that, I don't mean to be facetious and snort, snooty, but, uh, a- as we know, uh, option one, that's a three-year proposition, i- if everything fell in line, ideally. Uh, it's gotta be a, uh, you know, from start of construction at Franklin to completion of construction at Kittredge, you, you have to be looking at about five to six years. Uh, some of the things that come into play there, and, uh, the superintendent will, will, uh, talk about it, it, it has to do with, uh, some of the downsides. When, when we go through the, the, the matrix after this, uh, we'll, we'll get into some of those things. But I think, um, I don't know if you wanna expand at all on the, the part two?
Yes, well, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, so, Mr. Gross, so I don't have to text you back. We're saying that in three A, the modular, it would be modular build at the ECC and Kittredge, everything else is stick-built. I hope that makes sense. So it's modular at the ECC and Kittredge, in three A, everything else is stick-built. Um, the part two stuff, I, I think it's important, um, in option one, you see that we really break down based on the sprinkler, the M A A B, A A B compliance. Um, we chose not to do that in parts, part two, because again, we're not exactly sure what we're gonna do, but I think it's important to understand that the numbers do include, for instance, in part two of either option two or three, doing a sprinkler at Atkinson and/or at Franklin if we need to, getting in compliance. And that information is there. So again, if you're kind of looking for what it might be about, you can see it there. Um, but that's, that's important.
Yes.
However, you will notice that the, um, modular construction at the Kittredge in three A does not trigger M, total M A A B compliance numbers. It's the one that does not trigger the thirty percent. However, as I have learned over the last week, there would be need to be done some
Yes.
basic, uh, compliance for access, especially in the entrance and the bathrooms and the entrance. So, that is, everything else triggers the full compliance, but the modular build at Kittredge does not.
Right.
Okay.
Even if we did modular at Atkinson and Franklin and it's.
You're still doing all those other things?
You're still doing all those. And the challenge, and I think, you know, you talked about modular and stick, and, and the challenge is you also need kind of a, a space that works, and one of the concerns, especially at Franklin, is that space is not very easily to modular build. It's hard to prefab as, you can't go into the gym and prefab that. You gotta stick-build that.
Right.
So it's just not as easy. Do you see what I'm?
Yeah, for, for some of those.
For some parts. The classrooms, maybe, um, but it's, it's something.
Right, the most effective use of these is sticking with an rectilinear format. It's once you start to get any irregular shapes, it becomes more costly to try to come up with it.
So, that's just something to think about, too.
Could we, um, quickly go through the matrix? I know we have some people in the audience who've been very patient and they wanna have a comment or two.
I, I did just wanna say, and the next page is really, I've been talking about classrooms in and out and portables. I tried to put it all on one page so you could understand where we got to. Um, and especially for those interested in Thompson and Sargent, which we haven't talked much about, you can see how many classrooms are filled, uh, are freed up by the kindergarten. 'Cause I just wanna remind people that if we do pull the kindergarten out, we are able to reduce class size at those schools, one through five, so, without moving.
Without redistrict.
So I just, that's, I hope was a helpful page to add.
Yes.
It was helpful.
Good.
There you go.
Um, the last page, you wanna try to, try to make sense of this one for everybody?
Yep, um, this is, um, a, a benefit that, uh, it's a comparative matrix of the, the, and this, the four options. Um, in setting, it's very important, and we take it very seriously when we work with districts, uh, all over the place in setting up this matrix, um, that it become, uh, and, and take on the appearance, and it is, objective as can be. Uh, so what we, uh, we're most concerned about setting up the, the criteria that we're taking a look at to make sure, uh, it doesn't slight any of the options or, you know, so it a look at, to make sure it doesn't slight any of the options, or, you know, so it's not focused so that we go from zero to a solution on its own, because we just weighted things incorrectly or too heavily in some instances. So, we took it, if the topic that we're talking about, if the option we're reviewing, it's kind of a neutral thing, it's not a plus, it's not an advantage, it's not a disadvantage, it's a zero. If there is a disadvantage to that option with the item that's under discussion, it's a negative one. And then two, if it's beneficial, to consider it, it's simply a plus one. What we don't want to do is say one to ten for each of these things, and then it becomes very subjective at that point. We don't want to find ourselves there. We created the list of thirteen criteria with some feedback, that's something that that becomes situational to each town that we're working in, some things are more important than others. So, in this instance, just taking a look at the topics being, what option brings about effective change to the class size, I think we found that they all do, that was the goal. So, in fairness to each of the four options, they're all, they all achieve what it is we're looking to do, reduce the class size. The need for swing space, this is something we hadn't talked about, but if you take a look at the scale of work over to, and that too is embedded in the estimates as well, if you take a look at the scale of work and where it is at Franklin, it's impossible to occupy that during construction, it's not going to happen in a summer, it's probably going to happen in a year and a half. So, what do you do with a schoolload of kids at that point? And it's to, we're looking at millions of dollars in order to accommodate that, we don't have the answer where it would be, can they coexist on the same site as the construction? It's not ideal, it's a twelve-acre site, but it's very small, if you're taking a look at how widespread the construction is, the lay-down area that's going to be required, the amount of equipment, storage, and all, is it safe to have both going on on the same site? Probably not, and I think that would be, so, because of that, we're taking a look at option two as getting a negative one, that's not, it's very disadvantage, disadvantageous, whereas options three to three A, the nice part about it is, you can do that work here, and none of the other sites are impeded at all. So, too, I think it's large enough that we could take a look at lay-down areas and what might be needed for construction versus the school. We did take a look at what's the difference in fairness, if we were to do the part two issues with each of the options, suddenly, we are at those other schools, so, part two does involve the other schools, we did want to take a look at it in fairness. Able to perform part one while occupied, again, that's something we took a look at, can't see it happening at Franklin. The part one cost, I think this is one we did throw into it, only in that what we took a look at was, part one, it achieves what we're looking for, so, just as a strict comparison of costs, it's one we could take a look at, and then taking a look at what's the overall cost of the project to get us to the end. What we wanted to take a look at is, what's the impact on the number of students or the percentage of students across the district, as far as achieving part one, and I think there's some definite pluses to being able to just achieve part one at one school, one project, and suddenly, every single school's going to have a benefit to it. Part one, the site impact on parking traffic and pedestrian safety, I think that goes without saying, I've talked about it at Thompson, Franklin's going to be very difficult. We want to take a look at the butters, I think it was talked about, again, this isn't a couple-day experience, this is going to be, somebody's going to have to listen and see the dust and the noise and all, it becomes, and it's sometimes due to construction operations, it's not in the, you know, shuts down at three or four or five, it might be, you know, if the operations have to continue on, so, this, that's something that we definitely wanted to consider. We, the maintaining the K through five model, we didn't look at that as a plus or minus, we just looked, does it maintain the present model of K through five? School size versus the ability to manage the facility, and I think that does speak for itself, I think we talked about the mega structure at Franklin that's going to evolve. And then the need to phase is going to bring about the need to redistrict. I think, I hate saying that word, redistrict, and I'm sure the superintendent...
I said move kids.
You know, I think...
Trying.
I don't know if you want to address that one.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of the situation is, especially under option one, we would have to move students from Thompson and Sargent, and as we do this over time, would we redistrict once we did the first one, the site, we're just not going to have the impact on the first one, that could get pretty tricky. And in terms of option two, again, we would have the space at Franklin, all of a sudden free up some space, but we're not touching the other ones, and so, it's a little less, I'm not sure if that's a negative one or a zero, and then option three, there would be no need to redistrict.
And I think the tabulations that, I think, trying to just fill it in and not being in the least bit subjective, I think we end up with a cross from options one to three A, a negative three for one, negative seven for two, five for three, and a seven for three A.
There you have it.
There you have it.
Okay, quick questions from the board regarding this, Andrew?
Not on the matrix.
Okay, on the matrix. Ms. Mable, any questions, or Mr. Gross from overseas?
Thank you for these preliminary options, they are well thought out, and I look forward to further discussion and public comment.
Thank you. Amy, you're set?
I just had two questions, item four and item eight, particularly when it comes to either of the modular or stick-built. I guess I would have some difficulty understanding how this wouldn't have an impact on running an existing school where you're doing cheap by gel construction from some of our most sensitive students in the district. I'm just not clear on how, would have no impact there, and secondly, then, I'm concerned like Mr. McDevitt was about Franklin, about the traffic patterns and traffic flows and everything coming into and out of that whole site. It's very complicated as it is, and this is just going to add to that complexity, not only in terms of trying to get students in and out of two schools, but adding that to the construction traffic. Now, it's possible, maybe, that we could phase this in a way, because if we did modular, that it could be done over the summer quickly or something. Because you can erect the structure much more rapidly, but still, that would be a concern of mine, that we're, you know, we're right in the front yard of the ECC here, and we're going to be doing construction, and there's going to be students coming and going who have special needs and special transportation and all kinds of things going on there, and that would just be a concern of mine, so, just saying, and then I guess, the, I don't know how option one got the two plus ones on phase cost, because it's sort of a big-bang thing, you've got to spend all the money to get the benefit, right? You can't phase it in.
On option?
Option one.
On which number, topic one?
Line four, line five and six, that's good, right? The cost is good, it says, it's a one?
The overall price is a good number.
I understand, but from the point of view of the phase one cost, you have to spend all the money.
That's why they have a negative one there.
Yeah.
They have negative one on part one cost, and overall cost is one.
Yep, you're right.
Old sheet, yeah, I guess.
Oh, there you have it.
We gave our new.
There you have it. Okay, Mr. McDevitt has another question.
So, it's actually not for you really, but more for Dr. Price, so, I mean, this is excellent, and this is very detailed and thorough, and thank you for all of your time and your effort, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more conversations and questions that kind of come up. I think for the audience who's watching, you know, both here and at home, could you just help us go over a little bit of what the timeline and the process is? So, from my perspective, we're hearing this today as a first reading, and we will then make a recommendation on our meeting on the fifteenth, which will then go to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager.
It'll go to the Town Manager for inclusion in the CIP. And then, the Board of Selectmen would have to recommend that to Town Meeting, at which time there would be a vote at Town Meeting for...
Can I just say?
Yep.
Just to be clear, it's not a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, if we recommend, say, option one, they're not going to take up and say, we're going to go to option three. We're making, we're making a decision to, and they're going to say, they're going to decide whether they're going to fund it or not, but we're going to make a decision.
Yeah, it's a yes or no decision.
Yeah, so then it goes to Town Manager, and then it goes to Town Meeting, and it would depend which one we chose in terms of when we could get going on it. Our goal would be to get going on it as quickly as possible. I think that, you know, the reality is the modular construction at the ECC would probably be the quickest, I mean, we've talked about that a little bit, but who knows? And as soon as we choose an option, we would start putting down timelines. I can say that the part two components of anything would be integrated into the facility's master plan, too, that the Town Manager is actually going to start talking about at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, and that the timing of that would be in accordance with, and we would have to make some decisions in part two, which one goes first. I think it's fair to say, my thinking, I want to be really transparent, is I feel strongly that Franklin needs to be addressed on some pretty programmatic issues, so, I would struggle to put in the part two anything prior to Franklin, I think Franklin needs to be first. I think the conversation between Atkinson and Kittredge is not as clear, however, we would have conversations, but I think we all as a community feel like, we've got to do something with that gym at Franklin, and we've got to get it into a place where the programmatic space is better support kids.
And just for clarification of people at home, we're not doing this in a silo, the Town Manager and Superintendent have been in constant contact about this process, and the Assistant Town Manager has actually been in our meetings, as we've discussed this over the last month in more detail, so, they know what the process is.
No, I know that. I was just going to say, I have a follow-up, so, obviously, we're looking at the elementary at this point. So, I'm wondering if you could just give us a little bit of insight in terms of, you know, where is the middle school, and what does that look like? I mean, I personally have a seventh grader now, and I have two more kind of coming up, and I know a lot of people are concerned about where we are at the higher levels.
Yeah, so, I have started thinking about that, and I think, you know, the middle school space, we, as I've shared, our high average class sizes are actually in middle school, and I am concerned about the middle school and adding additional teams, however, similarly to the elementary, it would require some type of construction of additional classrooms, and I'm going to be ready to talk about that more in a few months, but I will say we're working on that. I actually walked Kevin through the middle school last week, and we're starting to really think about what would be there. It's challenging, it's not a small number, so, I think that that's really going to be a community-wide conversation, and it's, and I think, to be very fair about that, the Town Manager and I have worked very closely on the elementary, I think the middle school is going to require much more than us talking about it. And then, I also think, at the high school, because I don't want to not forget the high school, I really think, and I think your comment was really good at the beginning of the meeting, the high school is not a space issue, but the high school might be a schedule issue, so, as you know, we went to the trimester system, and one byproduct of that trimester system is there is limited choice with, for kids, in some cases, especially for kids at either end of the spectrum, in terms of, you know, the kids taking APs are limited in their classes, the kids who struggle are moving classes, and so, concerns there. And I have done some initial calculations about the FTEs needed to give more flexibility, and that will be something I'm going to talk about during the budget process. So, the high school's not a space issue, but I think it would be problematic to say that I'm not thinking about what the high school needs in terms of being able to provide a more comprehensive and flexible opportunity for our kids.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Flumbrich?
The facility's master plan has been implemented, self-funded to this point, I think, very successfully. It would appear to me, and I'm sure you've had some of these conversations with the Town Manager, options one and two would not be able to be effectively self-funded.
So, I think what would make sense, if you, the board would allow, is for me to get the Town Manager's opinion on that for our next meeting. Really, to kind of let him talk about, I don't want to, you know, I would never presume to speak for Andrew Mailer, so, I don't think he'd do the thing for me, but I do think that it would be important for me to say, okay, Andrew, here are the three options, three, three and A options, what makes sense from a fiscal perspective? I think it's important that we know that before we make a final decision, and I know he will be ready to kind of give that to us, in his words, which I think are better than mine.
Yep. Ms. Van Day for the questions?
One, when you were talking about the estimate tabulations on that sheet with the semen color, you said option one would be like a five to six-year...
Road trip, what about the other ones? Do you have, I know it's, we don't know what they are, but do we have a rough timeline?
So, option two, I can't tell you, I mean, that's a multi, we think about a year and a half build, right? So, realistically, we'd go out to bid after Town Meeting, that would be all of the following year, we'd start construction that summer, so, you're looking about a three-year, three-plus year process. I think that the belief is that if we fast-tracked it, and it's a little aggressive, option three, we would go out to bid, try to start very quickly, and be ready for September two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
That's an aggressive timeline, and it makes people nervous for me to say that, so, I say that with trepidation, but I have...
I have no trepidation, let's say that. We're going to do that, that's the case.
But aggressive and me are often used in the same sense.
Part one.
That is not, we're talking multiple years.
One thing that's important to remember, the part two of all these things are going to be addressed by another school, I mean, we may not all be here for that, for those discussions and those decisions, but that's a, you know, right now, I agree a hundred percent, Franklin School has got to be addressed, you know, there could be three or four new members in two years that may have a different opinion. Any last question from overseas?
Yes, I agree, we should include the middle school needs in the part two discussions and expectation setting for Mr. Gross.
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank everyone for being very patient with us today, so, I think, Kevin and Dan, if you could stay up there, I don't know how many people...
You could slide to the other two.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Donna, would you mind just kicking your microphone down to that chair right there? If people want to come up and comment on this first, I mean, you could talk about anything you want, but let's save that for afterwards. But if we get a public comment on this specific issue, whoever wants to come up, please step up to the microphone. Wow. Wow, oh, here we go. All right. Just for the record, name and address, please.
Oh, Heidi Waters, two one two five Turnpike Street.
Thank you.
So, I'm very familiar with Franklin, it's my ninth year there, a little nervous.
You personally?
So, sorry?
No. It's five grades.
So, I know that nothing is set in stone as far as the, like, placement of everything, but I'm just curious, why is the gym kind of floating, like, why is there a hallway into the gym, is that a regulation thing? Like, where you had placed it, there's like a hallway at the end that goes up? I mean, is it due to like the windows in the classrooms and things like that, so...
It's, we needed to create separation between, if that were the spot to consider placing it, we don't want to have embedded classrooms with no, and it would have wiped out the daylighting capabilities in about five or six classrooms, so, it was to create separation, small three-sided coys between them.
Is it a significant-sized hallway into it, or is it, does it look smaller than it is, or?
It would allow traffic, but you have both ways back and forth, students coming and going.
So, it's kind of like Atkinson's almost, like, the way it kind of...
Kittredge, Kittredge is quite wide.
I'm sorry, I'm in Kittredge, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have events in there, lots of parents and students going in there.
Okay, so, it doesn't feel like you're going into another building, it still has that connected, right, right?
A subtlety to it, and then, and again, there's been little thought with regard to, it's more for just massing and making sure we capture the footprint and size, we need to be realistic about this.
Right.
After-hours uses, if, it lends itself, if it's adjacent to that parking area, so, it could have direct access, and you don't have to march through the entire building and break security.
Okay.
So, it could be something.
That makes sense, okay. And then, the same with the parking lot, if we put kindergarten in there, I think there is space on that side where you would add the kindergartens for extra parking, so, that's kind of assumed that that's what'll happen, okay? I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes, and, I mean, one of the concerns, we have a brand-new playground, the ball fields are used for like, I think it's K through one.
T-ball.
Is that right, T-ball?
T-ball.
So, I think it's important to keep the ball fields there as best we can. So I think it's important to keep the ball fields there as best we can. There's a.
Any, any project that we encounter in any district, the goal always is to keep the play fields and at least replicate them if they have to be moved. And when the, when the possibility exists, we add to them because every town's the same way, needing play space for the kids in the rec.
Okay, all right, well, that's good to know. And then one other, no, you answered that question about the modular versus, just with the ECC, how much time it would take construction-wise? It would probably be quicker for a module, correct? Like it just kind of a, it's not a drop and go, but it's quicker than?
No, the actual work on-site would be less.
Okay.
Because, versus stick frame and building from scratch. So a lot of the work, yeah, end up with the quality control of being done off-site.
Yeah.
And brought to site, the assembly is less, if you were to start from scratch.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And the beauty of the modular construction, it allows you to better plan when your site work is going to occur, so you make sure that that all occurs in the good month windows, hopefully a lot of it in the summer times, I think as Mr. Limpert had said, relative to not affecting the building.
Okay.
And then the, the modules come in, now it's, it's more inclement weather, they're being dropped into place. Over the winter months, the existing building may be more closed up because the cold weather's starting to arrive, so process can keep going and that's, that also saves in time.
Yeah, definitely, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
One question for you.
Yes.
So if we put the kindergarten at the ECC, would you make sure that like the kids that were gonna be going to Franklin will be in classrooms with other Franklin Districted kids? And Atkinson and so on and so forth, so like instead of having a mixture of kids?
So one of the challenges with that, I hadn't even thought about that. So A, that's a great idea, I don't know, I'm meeting with the kindergarten teachers actually next week and I'm sure those are the types of things they're gonna be asking me. So the one advantage of putting all the kindergartens together is I would be worried to commit to that for maybe a bunch of reasons, but my biggest first reason is I wanna put all the kindergartens in equal or close to equal class sizes. So the challenge right now is we have some kindergarteners that their class sizes are okay, but others that are really big. And if we commit to having those, we are not able to take whatever X and divide by sixteen.
Okay, that makes sense.
And it's important that we do X divided by sixteen, so.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense, yeah, definitely. So it's almost like preschool where they're mixed and then they divide them.
The one thing we didn't talk about with the ECC that I think is really important is, you know, I felt strongly that if we were gonna add a kindergarten to add it to the ECC, there was a component that we haven't talked about. For our students who are, struggle the most with transition, often they are at the ECC. So we are not talking about multiple transitions for them, we're not increasing transition. They would stay at the ECC from three until first grade. And that was important to me, to think about the kids for whom the level of anxiety of transition is very high. We are not increasing the number of transitions for them.
Yeah, that's smart, that makes sense, okay, that's all I have, thank you. And thank you for this, for doing this.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For this happen.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? You're on the edge of your seat.
Hi, Kathy Koch, 239 Granville Lane, don't do well with microphones, prefer to just project. I had, thank you for doing this, this is a very informative presentation and a lot of the questions that I had reading through the materials were answered tonight, which is great. I have a couple of basic questions about this. The first is, and I'll go to transitions because you just talked about the kids in the ECC having the same number of transitions, but the question that I wrote down is you're creating a transition, then an additional transition for every other child in the district. So children now who are coming in from a preschool and transitioning are now going to have to transition again from kindergarten into another building. And not only is that a transition for them, but there's a level of work and planning on the teacher's part to then do that informing and that, that placement. There's a lot of nice things that go into placement decisions currently under the current model and I would hate to see that lost because they're not in the same building.
So the reality of the situation is you're completely correct. So I was thinking of ways to mitigate that additional transition. There's no doubt that these kids would have to make an additional transition. There are some benefits though, and I, and I think it's important. First of all, we get all the kindergarteners in one space. So one of the challenges we have with placing kindergarten, as you know, is it's quite the challenge of us placing kids. So, and it's also, we're trying not to overcrowd a school, so we will know who our kids are. The hardest thing a district does is try to figure out how many kindergarteners are going to arrive at their doorstep next year. And it's sort of like, like for instance, last year in the spring, I probably should have cut a kindergarten with the number of kids who we thought were coming, and thank goodness I didn't because our class sizes are big, right? So it does help some stability for us that we know who our kindergarteners are and we can service those kids and support those kids and ease their transition into first grade. I'm not gonna lie and say that it'll be, there's not, there's fewer transitions, that's not true. But our staff, working with our kindergarteners, I am, there are some real benefits as they move into the one through five, that right now, that transition into kindergarten into that school creates a lot of stress for us. And I know Mr. Gilligan's gonna agree, he spends his life in the spring, right? It's right, I mean.
It's hard, I mean, we end up placing kids out of neighborhood quite a bit. Kindergarten's the biggest pressure point area. So when you're talking about, you know, twenty-five in one place and then you might have a school where there's one or two classes of twenty, there's just, it's a lot of challenges and it's a lot of challenges on families. So like Dr. Price said, I think there's a lot of benefits to that ability to have that equal distribution. There's a whole host of other benefits, but I, and challenges, so.
Within that equal distribution though, they're still going back to their, their home, the homeschools. And there, because there are also all those issues of busing and distance for those of us who live out country, you know, whether we have wells or septic systems, you know, for those people who are practically, you know, living in Middleton, this is, this is, this is a significant thing with a little one.
And that's why the option was, option one is to look at all three, but there are some significant challenges to that too.
Right, and there, and you know, you, there's, you know, there are so many different educational models that can go into this, obviously. The second question that I had was, in, in talking about options two and three and three A, I'm assuming the discussion has happened, I don't know how much it's happened within the community at large, but three of the four options essentially on the table get rid of the existing K to five model. And I know there's a lot of fondness in town for the Bradstreet School. I was not in town for that time period, I've not experienced a district where the kindergarteners were all in one place. Has there been, I'm, I'm not gonna say has there, can you share with the community sort of, you did just a little bit, Mr. Gilligan, quite well, about some of the advantages for staffing and placement of having the kindergarteners all in one place? But are there advantages as well to maintaining the kindergarteners in a larger school community as part of the K to five when they're there with their siblings, they're there with older modeling, are there, I mean, what are, what are the thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, I think educationally, from a curriculum standpoint and from a resource standpoint and all those things, there's some real benefits. You know, I'll defer to Dr. Price, but I think the bottom line is, we have a lot of classrooms in elementary school with twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids. I think the average, if you just added up the total of elementary, I think it's twenty-four, roughly about.
Twenty-three point five-one.
Twenty-three point five-one. And that's with a couple places where we've had to add a classroom, might be on the smaller end. There's just a certain amount of infinite, infinite space that we have. And if we are going to have the ability to lower class size, we have to look at what would those best available options be? And to be honest, I, I probably wanted to do this with some preconceived thoughts about what would be good ideas, but a lot of it comes back to, I was really surprised at the creativity of the architects and their ability to.
Oh, thank you, surprised with that?
Well, my only other experience with architects was the high school, but I was really. You guys thought about ideas and came up with different strategies and looking at different things that I never would have thought about. And I've worked in the district nineteen years, so, you know, certainly I think it's room for discussion to talk about transportation, about the benefits of curriculum and a group of people all together, they're gonna eventually all be all together again. There's also some challenges around another transition. So I think there's pros and cons, but I think ultimately, the community, one of the things that I've heard over and over again is the class size in North Andover is just too big. And I have a colleague of mine in Beverly that I go to school with now, and she was having a forum last, two weeks ago, and they were talking about twenty-two being too big in Beverly and they wanted to get it down to eighteen and nineteen. And I'm thinking, oh my God, we'd die for twenty-two, but.
We are currently four students per class over the state average.
Yeah, it's very crowded, I was in a kindergarten classroom yesterday and by the time you factor in all the wonderful support staff, it's a lot of bodies, a lot of bodies. And I'll just, the one last question that I'll ask very quickly, you know, you talked a little bit about support staff, nurses, you know, guidance staff, you know, think, all those things, custodial staff that needs to come in. What are the thoughts around any, any of these moves? I know it's gonna look, it will look very different based on the choices that are made, but in terms of music specialist, library media specialist, art specialist, because those are positions that also have to be covered and, you know, and the gym, the gym teachers, the PE specialist, all those, those types of pieces.
Yes, I mean, I, I don't need to, to push it more than that, like, that's why we're building the space. I think kindergarten kids and I frankly think ECC kids should have the option to have art and music and gym. And one advantage of this is a group of kids, a hundred and twenty students educated by us are gonna get a gym and an art and a music space.
That's huge.
And a library, potentially.
In fact, the one thing I would say is having, had two students that did attend Bradstreet School, I thought it was a wonderful experience for them to have a, kind of that homogeneous environment, all the same age. It was a very safe environment, I thought, for the students, because, you know, they weren't. With fifth graders, which to them seem like giants, right, I mean, if you're a kindergartner. So I thought that was a nice environment and, you know, we live out country with a well and a septic system and my kids got bussed all the way to Bradstreet, so they survived and it worked out for them. So it, I think we can make this work. But I, I thought it was a nice environment for kindergarteners, I thought it was a, you know, and they could have a whole curriculum and a whole set of activities that were very specifically tailored just to them, that they could all share and participate in along with parents. So I, I thought it was a, a nice model and in some ways I was sort of, sort of sorry to see it go for a variety of reasons.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, that's a lot, a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I can see you're heading out, you're dying to get up.
Diane Huster, 279 Winter Street. I was gonna ask you, one of my questions was about the ECC, EC, C and the educational policy and pluses and minuses. I was around when we created the Bradstreet ECC and there was just as much angst about having everyone going there and would they be in the same classroom as them going to Franklin. One of the huge benefits of it is that all the kids got to know everybody from every school and were classmates with them, saw them on the soccer fields, et cetera, et cetera, went to the other schools and then met again in the sixth grade. So there's a lot of benefits, there were negatives, when it was dismantled, everyone was really upset and then realized there were benefits of going back to their schools. So it's, it's a balance. But my bigger question is, the plan seems to address fixing class size right now. I haven't seen any enrollment projections for the next ten to fifteen years. How many additional students will be moving into North Andover? And so it begs the question, spending a lot of money to just, A, possibly option three, and fix some deficits at the other schools. But should you be looking at a new school, Foster Farm, we own the property, for similar money? Or a little more, yes.
Yeah, so.
A little more.
I, I do wanna draw your attention to the fact that in option two and in option three and three A, we actually put in the possibility of going up to twenty-five additional classrooms.
I saw that.
Which is important to understand and that's the, that's the part here that I think is important. I'm just gonna talk about the number of classrooms here for a moment. And if you look at my analysis, if we put in twenty-five and actually twenty-six, because we would add an existing one at Sargent, that gets us well below the state average. And, you know, that's not what we're, we're going here to be around the state average. But the thing is, if we add those additional classrooms, we're gonna deal with the increased potential enrollment. Why you don't see enrollment projections here is that our enrollment projections don't show at this moment a dramatic increase. And we're happy to show them. However, and many people in North Andover, we are doing some pretty significant building and potential building here. And so I think it's really important that we plan for that and we're plan, and then in options two and in options three and three A, we are planning for that possibility.
In, in three and three A, you are planning, because it looked like it was.
Part two.
Part two.
Oh, part two.
Part one gets us where we need to be now, part two gets us up to twenty-six additional classrooms, where if we do that math, we are well below the state average, so we could add additional kids.
Okay, and when I was on the board, we had class averages thirty-three and thirty-six.
Yeah, you know, people have, have, have talked about that and I think it's important to understand that there, and I'm happy to talk more about this at another time if it's helpful, but the students who are in our classrooms right now in North Andover are very different than the students who are in classrooms twenty, thirty, forty years ago. Just in terms of whom we all go to school with, especially around the movement of special education and inclusion, increased racial, ethnic, language diversity, I think it's important to, people, I think it's important to address that the reality of who our students are in two thousand and sixteen is different than who our students were twenty, fifteen, thirty years ago.
I'm not saying that was a good thing, it was a very bad thing.
Yeah.
And the consequences is we had to build two schools, actually four schools, in a very short period of time because of lack of planning and lack of building over the years. A school every decade, not four schools in one decade.
Right, yeah. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Y.
And thank, I, I understand you're very responsible for a lot of the structures we already have, so I just wanna thank you for that.
Okay, seeing no for, oh, round two, Kim.
Again, Kim Dolly, ninety-five Hickory Hill Road. I just had a couple of kind of question clarifications from the presentation. One, you mentioned that this was online, we were trying to find it on our phones and couldn't, so I didn't know if you wanted to clarify for people where.
I'm just told the what.
So it's actually on, online, but it's also the email I sent you last night. If you go to footnote number three, you can go right to KBA report, the full report is right there.
Okay.
So if anyone there, feel free.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at the, both the school committee page and the homepage and didn't.
It's on the school committee page, it's on the school committee page, you have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can also throw it right on the front of the website for anyone tomorrow. Ms. Sagari, front of the website tomorrow.
Please.
Be there by midnight.
Please, please, thank you very much.
Okay, Kim.
Great, a second question was, it was pointed out that in option, I think both three and three A, that the kindergartens all had bathrooms, but I wasn't entirely clear in the other options, like at the Franklin, did, did all of the options, did the kindergartens have bathrooms?
Every, of every option, if any new space that would, or if there was any development, did it become designed in nine fifty? If it was a kindergarten, it was eleven hundred square feet plus of bathroom, including, including the bathroom.
I was wondering, I think you touched on this a little bit when you were talking about option two and the modular versus stick construction, but I was curious, because the modular seems to be considerably less in option three, is there the potential to make the new classrooms in option one or two modular as well? And would that impact the price similarly?
The, there, there are some configurations that do lend themselves to modular construction. You lose the economy of, of going to modular if we have irregular shapes and sizes. And Franklin, if you take a look at, you know, the amorphic shape that the kindergarten could potentially have, it'd be very difficult to go with a modular construction. Then when you get into all the other parts and pieces to Franklin, a lot of those are repurposing the existing gymnasium with the classroom spaces, small additions onto it. So that would be a tough utilization of modular concept to work in that instance. Some of the others, you possibly could take a look at that, but I think for the sake of genuine comparison, it, it made sense to just take a look, just hang on to stick frame and take a look at it because there's a lot of individual design pieces that are just typical that work well in modular.
I could tell that Franklin was a little bit more unusual, but when I was looking at the Kittredge and the Atkins and stuff. I could tell that Franklin was a little bit more unusual, but when I was looking at the Kittredge and the Atkins and stuff, they looked fairly square.
Just if I could add one thing, one of the true benefits of modular is when you can do it all as one piece, as you start to selectively drop additions around the school, two, three, four, however that goes, then it becomes a lot, the cost escalates, so the modular becomes less beneficial on those additions than it would be to stick-built them on site.
Oftentimes, it, again, repetitive, the repetitive nature of some of the larger additions made sense to consider modular, when you get to the small ones, especially in, it can become, the square foot cost isn't in the wheelhouse for where you'd see savings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Diane kind of answered some of my looking forward questions. I guess you mentioned talking with the town manager about the impact on budget, and I guess I would just, I would love to have him also address not just the core facility costs that we've talked about, but the teaching and additional administrative support and, you know, that side of each of these, because I think, I don't have a clear sense of, you know, how, how much the support staff would need to increase in option one versus option two versus option three.
So, that's my job, because, just to be clear, so the facilities is working with the tenant manager, I is the superintendent of schools. Once we have clarity on which one of these options, I have to say, there's not gonna be a huge difference, the major cost of this is gonna be the additional classroom teachers in the classrooms. The ancillary supports, although they may be slightly different, are actually not gonna be the driver of this change. I mean, the main change here is, we are gonna have to hire, to fill these classrooms, sixteen to twenty-six new teachers, that's the main, that's the main big number.
Okay, I guess I would love to hear kind of that addressed.
But I will say, I did in the letter I sent out last night, talk about how I've already begun to phase in those teachers, so in last year's budget, I put a teacher that I did not hire, we used that money actually to roll out the Lucy Cawkins program, so we have one teacher already in the budget of the sixteen. The plan is to put another two in for this coming year, I'm previewing the budget for this year, but the idea is to build those up over time, we started with that process last year. So, I am very clear that that's going to take some time, but I will let you know, we're not waiting for those classrooms to be built, we've already started that process.
And that's, that's great to understand, I just, I know you threw out the very aggressive, you know, September twenty eighteen date, and that number of teachers plus support staff plus facility in a short amount of time, I'd love to-
But, but I will tell you that if we go with the kindergarten concept, just because it gets overwhelming, we already have fifteen kindergarten teachers, so those, we don't have to hire the fifteen kindergarten teachers to open up the fifteen, we have to hire one, right? And whatever additional support staff, it's actually backfilling those classrooms at the schools that we don't have to do all at once, we'll see where are the biggest class sizes and backfill those, and we can do over time. So, it's not like we can't open, if we do the kindergarten approach, it's not like we can't open the kindergarten, we have the vast majority of that staff already in place.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, any further? I was just gonna recognize you, too. I was remiss, I was remiss in not introducing you earlier, but DeCollegio, thank you for being here the entire night, I appreciate your interest.
I am still very much behind Stan as far as his contributions and time.
Well, I'm sure one of us will return the favor on Monday night, I'm sure.
Many of us.
So, I actually have my parent hat, this proposal was first, the option three proposal was first brought to our attention on the Board of Selectmen, probably the week after I brought my kindergartner to school.
Yes, September.
I really was able to look at it through the eyes of not just a parent, but also a former student in our school system, and it really drove home for me, you know, the benefit of that centralized kindergarten space. And I think about, when I enrolled my daughter at the Atkinson School, I had this conversation with Dr. Price, and she pointed out the richness of Atkinson because of the swath of the population, the diversity that's there, the type of people that go there, and it really has been, you were right, a very amazing experience. And I thought about the central kindergarten and how it compares to our neighborhood schools, and right now, the way we are structured, we do have only neighborhood schools, and unless you grew up here, went through the school system here, run for office, there are whole neighborhoods that exist in this town that people right now have no idea exist. There are people that go to Kittredge School that have no idea about whole neighborhoods that go to Atkinson, there are people that go to Thompson School that have no idea about the Stan Limpert neighborhood seven miles out. And so, it really was, you know, when I looked at that, my personal experience, it's exactly actually as Diane said, it's exactly as Stan said, that you had this opportunity to go to school with everybody in town, it guaranteed that when you went to elementary school, you knew some kids in your class, and that when you went to sixth grade, you actually did remember kids that you went to school with. I compare that to my daughter's experience, and my daughter went to the ECC for her second year of preschool, and when she ended up going to Atkinson, we went to drop her off, and I realized, I'm like, I have no idea, I mean, I live in a new neighborhood anyways.